I believe Rich is gonna be zooming in, so if he's just give me the thumbs up if he's on. Okay? If he's on, okay, thank you, alright. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, July 19th, 2021. The first matter on our agenda is the approval of the June 21st, 2021 minutes. Anybody have any comments or corrections on the minutes for June 21st?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, those minutes have been approved. First matter on the agenda is a site plan review and a special permit for 380 Lorren Street. We received a letter today from the applicant requesting that the matter be continued to our next meeting. They indicated that they had met with planning staff to change some plans and they submitted new plans, which were not submitted on time for tonight's meeting. So they're requesting if those plans could be looked at by the other city departments and be on for the next meeting and therefore they'll have a chance to discuss the matter further with the other departments throughout the city. So we did receive a letter requesting a continuance to the August 16th meeting. What's the request of the board for the request for the continuance?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until August 16th.
Is that Mr. Lockhart on the Zoom? Okay, okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Lockhart to continue the matter to 8:16?
I second.
Second, but Caleb, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so anybody who's here this evening, that matter will be on for the August 16th matter. Thank you very much, that motion's been approved. Moving along on the agenda, we have a site plan review and a special permit. Actually today we have four or five special permits and site plans. This is for a site plan review and special permit for 545 Broadway Street. Ernest Domante, on behalf of Alonso Romalio, has applied to the planning board for site plan review under section 11.4 and a special permit under section 12.1C at the above address. The applicant is seeking to convert a existing warehouse into a 12-unit residential building. The property is in the urban mixed-use zoning district. May we hear from the applicants, please?
Hello?
Yeah?
Yes, state your name.
Yes, my name is Ernest D'Oranti, and I'm representing the owner, which is Monsieur Eldeos.
Okay, so you can give us your presentation on what you're requesting.
The building is at the acres district. So we already went to the board for the historical department. So what we asking for is having to be able to put the parking below the building and also I think we requesting to have some landscaping in the front and also having 12 unit inside, that includes first floor and second floor.
Did you receive the memo that we received from staff dated today, by any chance?
Yes, I did receive that and since we already had the appointment, I had it a little bit too late, so I couldn't get.
Yeah, because it said, you know, you need a stamp, professional engineer is surveyor. So without that, the plan cannot be accepted as is?
I did provide one and I think the one that we provided were to the zoning board, which is we did provide one, which is at the parking in it. The only difference was we didn't have the measurement of the parking, which is supposed to be nine by 18. But we did provide that with a stamp by the engineer.
So without the survey, without the stamp approval, then the plan to us, it doesn't meet the criteria to go forward. Also, they indicated that you gave the applicant, you submitted a couple of different plans and it's up to you to pick what plan you're going forward on and not for us to sit here and tell you what plan to give us, to have us decide on what plan you want us to prove by. So on the latest memo, they say you're missing the fact that you're asking, you submitted more than one site plan, so we don't know what site plan you're going forward on. You don't have the stamp, you don't have the location of the parking spots, you don't have the dimension of the access drive and drive aisles, you don't have the curb cut. And that was what we just received today. And then there was other matters for review that they gave you July 1st, did you see those?
I've seen the one before, but the one today, well, it came out a little bit too late, that's why we couldn't act on it. So we did call the engineer and he's working on it for now.
Okay, well, the engineer should have known, he submitted them that have to be for tonight's meeting. But you can proceed with saying anything else you'd like.
Well, the only thing is to postpone it for the next meeting, I assume.
As long as you can get all that stuff together, we are getting pretty full on the next meeting. But like I say, it's getting, without those matters properly addressed, we wouldn't be allowed to even approve the site plan, never mind a special permit. Because those are just the basic requirements that have to be met for our site plan to begin with.
They definitely will be submitted, because we have, I have talked to staff about that and we actually need to do some calculation on the drainage, which is we already have an engineer talking to the engineer of the city to provide those things. So it's a matter of time, like I said, we just received that today and I couldn't act on it that quick, because I was actually in New Hampshire, I couldn't do anything about that. But I promise to bring that over as soon as possible.
Okay, when you resubmit, you gotta give us at least, you're gonna give us one site plan request. It says here, they should, you know, that you submitted three different versions of a site plan.
What I did, I provide one, the first one that I provide had the parkings in it and the only problem we had, we didn't have the measurement, because we decreased the entrance of it, because actually it was 40 feet, so we bring it back to 25 feet and that was one of the recommendations by the city.
Okay, anything else you'd like to say?
I will provide those as soon as possible, that's all.
So you did receive the comments back on July 1st, right?
Yes, I did, which is I act on it, that's why I provide a 3D drawing of what the parking will look like and all the landscaping and stuff, that's what I received.
I would suggest, you know, you try to address the comments, you know, the comments from the building department, neighborhood planners, you have it, you know, from planning staff. As you know, these all go out to seven different departments and we tried to find out as much information we can by the other departments to help us make a more intelligent decision. So I'd suggest looking out to try to see if you can answer as many of those questions, because what we do is, we ask all those questions and come before us. The planning staff has raised the issue, if the building engineer has, I mean, the building inspector has raised an issue, then you know that we're gonna address that issue here. So I mean, there's an issue that came up with the building department, there's a couple of things that doesn't seem, that neighborhood planner had comments on, that they were concerned about. So I strongly suggest you try to iron those out before you come back.
Yeah, we did talk to the building department, I think the building inspector came over while we were taking the siding out.
So what you need is, you need to submit a set of plans with all those comments on them. If he tells you what to put on it, and you don't submit it to us, and it's not on the plan, that verb is communication with him, doesn't come before us and therefore, when we receive a letter from them saying otherwise, we have to go by what we have in writing, instead of what communication you've had. So if they've updated something between now and then, or what some people do is, they get the comment sheet, they come back with a new set of plans and say, since we received the comment sheet, we approved, we did X, Y, and Z as requested. But the other ones are, for some reason, we don't wanna do X, Y, or Z, and this is our reason behind it and we think this is better than what city staff says.
Okay.
Okay? So at this time, are you requesting that we continue the matter?
I'm sorry?
Are you requesting that we go forward on the matter tonight, or are you requesting that we continue it?
Continuance would be better, I think what, I mean, if there's any other choice that we can do. I mean, I'm looking at, at this time, I don't think I'll be able to provide all the requirement concerning having the engineer provide some kind of plan for what already there. It could, continuance tonight, I think, is kind of impossible. I don't think it'll be approved unless, unless I have a stipulation of providing those things later on.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I mean, we give you the opportunity to request what you'd like to do. I mean, we don't tell you what to do, and then if you don't like what we tell you to do, and then we say no, you'll say, well, you told me what to do. So we don't do it that way. People have asked us to do that in the past and, I mean, we've had engineers come in, well, here's Plan A and B, you decide. And we said, no, it doesn't work that way. You just put your best foot forward and we decide.
Yeah, I think we'll postpone it for next.
So we do have, our next meeting is August 16th and we do have, looks like we're gonna have a pretty busy agenda there. If not, we can go over to our September 9th meeting, if you like, that would be on a Thursday night. And that should maybe, to give you a little extra time to try to get all the plans in order, would that be sufficient?
Oh, the earlier is the better, because I can talk to the engineer actually the more first thing in the morning and how to plan.
Well, I think, there are a lot of things that are on these sheets that were given to us. It's gonna take a bit of time, it's not gonna be done within a week or two. And then you have to get it back to City Hall within a short period of time and then all this other city departments have to come in on it, and it has to come before us again.
Okay.
So I'm just thinking if we give you additional time, it might give you more time to get all the plans in, get the comments questionnaire in and everything else.
Sure.
Okay?
The next will be the 19th?
So we could put it on for September 9th, if you'd like.
September 9th?
If you wanna say something, you have to come to the mic and identify yourself on the record, sir.
The next one is August 16th, you say?
Name and address on the record, please, sir.
My name, Alois Romalo.
Yeah.
And I own the building at 445, and my partner. And for me, in our own interest, if we can do early, the August 16th, because I think, we just got the letter today saying that, I mean, about the permit and the curb cut, I thought it fixed it. But the permit, the reason, the historic board asked us to remove some blinders so they can see us underneath. And it was my fault, I should have put a permit, I didn't put a permit for that. And I will do the permit this week. And I think that the thing is, you know, I mean, it's up to him, but it's not a minor thing, so I mean, that's what the, the matter is gonna go around the trees, that's, you know, I mean, that would be, I don't think it'd be a big issue to provide. And with the curb cut and the survey, we, I, we already had the survey that this guy wanted to do the elevation for the garage. And I already paid him two weeks ago, but because of all the rain, he told me he can do it last week and he say he may try this week, we see the weather, how it's gonna be, but you know. But if you keep posting to August 16th, I think you'll be fine, right?
Alright, I mean, like I say, there's a lot of comments on the July 1st date, so I hope you can incorporate those all by August 16th.
Yeah, we probably will.
Alright, I mean, so there's quite a few comments here.
Sure, sure.
The first sheet today was just a minor stuff, this sheet here is more in detail. Talks all about the parking plan, I mean, you have notice from the building department, it says that, he has questions with your accessibility, doesn't show accommodations of AAAB regulations.
They did send accommodation, I thought you should.
And then we have comments from the neighborhood planner, I'm just reading what you said, you got July 1st, so.
I didn't, I didn't say a lot of them, which is, I think they were talking about the 521.
But they have to be on the plan, you know? So when we come in, we look at a plan, we have plan approved as the plan is submitted to us. So you have to submit.
I did submit a plan that has those things in there, I mean, that has the 521 CMR.
Well, I mean, we have people saying, I mean, they're talking about your table requirements may be off as well for your parking. On page two, the minimum, you know, I mean.
I probably will have to check the email again, because I think I answered all those questions already.
Like I said, so if you change these, I mean, for parking, the parking layout should be on the plan, you know?
The parking, the parking, like I said, that wasn't the primary plan. The only thing that we didn't have, which is you, they were asking for, is the measurement of the parking, which is supposed to be nine by 18. And that was a recommendation by the city to take a look at, while we doing the landscaping, to take a look at those. But I think I did answer all those in the plan.
So you need, you know, the landscaping plan, the lighting plan, and all that.
The lighting, I did, I did mention that, that may be a floodlight.
Yep, if it's mentioned, we need a plan, yeah, yeah.
What happened, he keeps sending the plan and they keep adding stuff, and that's why you say you have a 3D plan. The original plan is the last one, because he sent the plan and the curb, the curb cuts 40 feet, they wanna reduce to 25. You know, and you had to redo.
Yeah, that's, that's the original, the original was the actual existing parking that we have there. The recommendation was to reduce it to 25 and be able to get the parking outside. I did mention all that and provide that in a plan. The only thing that I didn't do, which is we had a problem with having the engineer coming back on site and take care of that, is showing the dimension of the parking and where they're gonna be situated and also the drainage that we were talking about, the calculation due to the fact we're gonna have the parking below the building. But we did, we did show that in a plan, actually, I've sent several plans, maybe.
The parking there and the handicap, it's, we're gonna have elevated the garage to the first floor and one apartment with a bathroom with a handicap, you know, accessibility.
Actually, on my comment, on my comments, what I did show is there is a provision in 521 CMR in a building before 1996, I assume, that being used for any kind of services could be transferred without those requirements. But we did take that in consideration and add an elevator, a one-flight elevator from the basement to the first floor. And I mean, frankly, I mean, if we go into the code, I think it meets all the codes requirement that, that would be, that will satisfy the building, the building code. So my, my take now is, the recommendation was to minimize the entrance, which is we did. The only thing that we didn't put it on the, on the primary plan, which is the engineer will be taking care of that. So that should be showed in one of the drawing that I provide already. And that had not only the parking lot with the, with the reduced dimension, it also has a three-dimensional, how it's gonna look like after everything is done. So everything should be there, the only thing that should, that you probably won't see is the curb cut by an engineer, stamped by an engineer, everything else is there.
The last recommendation, we just got the mail today, because I.
No, I understand, yeah, I mean, we got it too.
Yeah.
Same date, July 19th, same day.
Because I thought we all said.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and I mean, any professional engineer surveyor, they know they have to put the stamp.
The only thing we don't have is the stamp.
Yeah, but I mean, now you're looking at, all the parking spaces have to be set up, the dimensions of the access drive, the curb cut, landscaping area, trees dimension, tree pits, and dimensions of curbing, building, street teams, application should provide details for casting, place grates around the base of the proposed, so, I mean, the other things you're checking off, and now demolition siding. So you have a couple of other things, which were just in today's, like I say. Okay, I mean, so that new plan has to be submitted, has to be given to planning staff, has to go out to all the other city departments, they all have to comment on it, they all have to come back and it'll be done in a timely fashion before we meet by the next meeting.
Now, my question would be, if we do proceed to continue today, would we be able to get some kind of a contingent to the, the staff recommend, the staff required to finish that, such as the plan, stamped by an architect, by the surveyor, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all that, I mean.
Okay, if we continue today.
Yeah.
Can we have a stipulation on getting all these requirements that's mentioned?
We don't give stipulations on continuance, no.
Okay.
No. We either, because we have to hear from all the public.
Alright.
It's a public hearing, it's not just what we're gonna say when you come forward on the thing. So all this is public knowledge, it's all posted on the webpage, everybody's gonna look at it. So these are just comments from city staff that, that they're suggesting that we suggest, yep, yep, I'm sorry. They're suggesting that we comment on, or look at. So you can submit a new set of plans, if staff still comes up and says, you're missing all these things and you're back in the second time, missing all the exact same thing, you may get a continuance, you may not.
Okay, alright, so we go for the next, next meeting, which is.
That's why I was saying, if you need more time than the August 16th, because as of now, we cut off our limit for public hearings and I think we're just about, since we continue one already tonight to the 16th. And then our next one is September 9th, which is.
You think maybe we should get more time?
I think, I think we gotta get more time.
Yeah, just go to September 9th.
Yeah, we go September 9th.
Okay.
Just get enough time.
So at this point in time, the applicant's requesting a continuance. What's the request on the board to have the matter continue to our meeting in September till September 9th?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the petition to the September 9th planning board meeting.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Caleb.
So I do want to know maybe the progress on the variants, if they are requesting any and whether they have made any application, because, I mean, otherwise we'll, we'll have to wait for the variants, the zoning board to decide.
So, did you go to zoning board already?
No, we haven't.
Monday?
We have it Monday, yeah. Okay.
We're gonna be able to go, I mean, the next month, or we gotta wait the?
You can apply to the zoning board before you come here, you can come here first, go there first, it doesn't matter. That's within your purview. So if you wanna go and you get those variants, then you come back before us. Some of these questions addressing the variances could, could have been solved.
Alright.
Yeah, so you can still stay on there, you know? Just say, you know, the planning board were here, but some of the stuff was insufficient on the plan and we requested, you know, we didn't have the survey, if they may want to look at some more.
It seems like it's a little confusing, this plan, because, you know, it's back and forth, they keep asking to change and that stuff. And I, every time he does, he sent to me and he said, it looked good. And, you know, I mean, I talked to people on the planning board, they said it was okay. Then this today was like, I had this email, I saw, my God.
Yeah, I mean, that's why if you have any questions, you know, come in and ask if you can sit down with staff and talk it over, you know, probably a week or two before the meeting and say, what else do we have? You know, and then say, what are your concerns? You know, before we come back in, we wanna make sure we can get everything in order.
Sure.
Okay? That's just a recommendation, it's all there. I can't tell you what they're doing, how to submit it, but I know staff would be helpful for that, okay? So wait a minute, so we. Caleb, that is your question? Caleb, that answer your question?
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor to continue till September 9th. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second them.
Motion second. All in favor to continue the matter till September 9th, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. So we'll continue on September 9th. So good luck, and hopefully you'll have it in order on that date. We wish you well. Good luck. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a site plan review and a special permit for 1115 Westford Street. Assured Testing Laboratories has applied to the planning board for a special permit under section 12.8F and site plan review under section 7.10.5 to open a marijuana testing laboratory at the above address. And can we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you and good evening. I have a presentation that is available if the board would like to see it. But I've also logged in on Zoom here, so I don't know if that would be more convenient. I, I leave it to the board to help figure out the technical side of things as I.
I'll let, I'll plan to see how, which way they can assist you on that, whatever's easier for them.
Can you share your screen? It's my first. Yeah, all right. Not a problem. I came with contingencies. So, again, thank you this evening, everyone here. My name is Dr. Demetrius Pelikoudis, and I am the CEO and founder of Assured Testing Laboratories. So I will be sharing my screen here on Zoom for everyone to see. All right, is that all visible for everyone? Excellent.
Yeah, we have it on our screen, thank you, sir.
All right, fantastic. As mentioned in the memo to the planning board, this is our second time before the planning board. We did go through with the utmost intention of completing build-out at 59 Lowes Way with our initial special permit application. Unfortunately, there were some items that were not disclosed to us initially by ownership as far as their situation in order to follow through on the letter of intent to have us as a tenant. To that end, we shifted and we found through a survey 1115 Westford Street. We have reached a significant portion of the negotiation with Princeton Properties, who are the owners, which I believe on the Zoom call, we do have a representation from Princeton Properties on the line. And they have given us and would like to go on the record their full support in us moving forward with this application with the special permit, with the full intention that we build out at the, at this site, assuming we receive the special permit. And to that, I'll just turn over briefly, just to, if we can have a few words, I believe Jeff Brown is on the call for Princeton Properties.
Yes, I don't know if I can be heard.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, great, sorry. Yes, my name is Jeff Brown, I'm Vice President and General Counsel for Princeton Properties. I think that, one, we fully support.
He's dialed in, I don't believe he's on a, on a computer in order to see.
Sorry, Mr. Brown, I know if you are visual or on the phone, so I just asked if we could see you on the Zoom if possible.
I am, I am on the Zoom, but they don't seem to be letting me in.
Okay, thank you.
So, back to the beginning, I'm at Princeton Properties, and we fully support the application for special permit by Dimitri and Assured Labs. We've been working with Dimitri for a few months now. We have examined many of the special permit criteria that I see in your memorandum dated July 13th from adequacy of the facilities, utilities, traffic flows, parking, safety, and things of that nature. And we are very comfortable that this operation satisfies those criterias. We are satisfied there will be no orders that will affect other residents in the building. We do have sufficient parking. We're satisfied that Dimitri has put together a very thorough security plan and safety operations for this, this testing lab. And so we fully support it. We are, as Dimitri mentioned, completing our lease as we speak. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, sir.
If I may continue?
Sure, absolutely, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. One of the key things that we were looking for in shifting from the original site to the new one is that it had a similar square footage, similar orientation, so that much of what we had put before the planning board before would be able to be carried over without, with minimal revision. We did go forward and revise and put forward those plans, which based on the memo, I believe we were approved by all of the offices, such as with security plan. Deputy, Deputy Goldner spoke with me and, you know, was very pleased with what we had. Also, our hazardous waste plan management was approved as well, and our fire plan in all of this. So this presentation's going to look very similar to the one previously, so I hope I'm not being overly redundant, but for, for the sake of this, I'll, I'll go through it. So this is for our proposed independent testing laboratory. And this is what is defined as the testing laboratory for cannabis within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Frankly speaking, there is a dire need right now. Since my last presentation, there has been only one additional testing lab that has been given a final license by the Cannabis Control Commission. There have been a number of vaping deaths and long-term issues that have come by a lacking management and upkeep of this infrastructure and system that we wish to bring a gold standard to. This four independent testing labs is sorely lacking in the amount of product that is being produced in the state, creating a bottleneck to reaching the safe and tested consumer market. While at the same time, further licenses are continuing to be issued while lab capacity has not expanded to handle this. So what does my particular background bring? I have a PhD in pharmaceutical science from Northeastern University. I received my undergraduate degree from Salem State University in chemistry, biochemistry in particular. I've spent the last seven years in researching cannabinoids, which are the chemical aspect of the cannabis plant and all of its derivatives. I worked previously in the pharmaceutical sector for Novartis and Sanofi or Genzyme, for those who are more familiar with Massachusetts' history. I also have food safety and regulatory experience, where I worked for a company up in Lawrence, Massachusetts, known as Charm Sciences. And Charm Sciences' claim to fame is that they, at the time, produced 80% of the testing for the world's dairy. And they now have branched into grain, I am told, as well, and they do 40% of the, of the world's grain. So you see, agricultural testing is not something that is new. You know, the Food Drug Administration, there's food first in there. So why reinvent the wheel? I want to bring all of the schooling that I was, I, lucky to receive, and put it into this burgeoning industry so that we can, if it's going to be legal, let's make it safe. The location itself, as you see in this current slide, has ample parking available. I believe that these colors are color coordinated for the different floors. There are three tenant-available floors with a ground-floor garage parking as well. And so this is something that we won't be impeding or creating any new type of parking situation there. It's already what's been approved for the building, and so on. What's more is, while cannabis seems to be a questionable topic for some, we do not want to be a billboard on the side of a building, but more a bronze plate, you know, so that people know where to find us if they're on the premises. But we wish to be innocuous and not make any loud noise. We want to bring good business here to Lowell, while keeping to ourselves to the best of our ability. And to that matter, how will our samples actually make it to the site? We plan on having unmarked cars, very similar for those who are familiar with the Quest Diagnostic Cars, that go around and collect medical samples from the Commonwealth, except ours will have no markings on them. There will be two drivers in there, and they will be able to be there for accountability of each other. What's more is, there will be cameras within the vehicle to be able to produce a chain-of-custody-esque procedure, so that that way, they come in very discreet containers that have secondary containers within as well, containing the samples. These samples themselves being about the tip of my thumb, about yay big, so very small. And I believe that one of the items on the memo is, you know, how much sample will be on here, so I'll get to that in, in a little bit. But very innocuous, very quiet, discreet, we don't want to be bothering our neighbors, let alone those within the building that we reside. From using radial measurements, using the Google website, I was able to plot out not just 500 feet, but 1,000 square feet from the location, to which I believe the only location stipulation is that we are no closer than 500 feet from a school. We're obviously well beyond that. There is nothing within even the 1,000-foot radius, which I see Peter nodding his head. Yep, so we, we've tried to do our homework to the best of our, our ability here to satisfy all parties. And a lot of people ask, you know, how, how does this work? You know, getting back to the sample question, how much sample will we be bringing? For everything that gets grown or manufactured, you'll notice that the testing lab is sort of ancillary or parallel to this production pathway. Because typically, when people think of the cannabis industry, they think it gets grown, and it either goes straight to the wholesaler or retailer from there, or it is then taken and manufactured, and, and then further along. At both of those checkpoints, for every 10 pounds of product that is produced, there is a singular representative sample that is pulled, and this is something that is put forth by the state, this is not something that I come up with, that, that small sample that I mentioned here, we will be taking those samples and running our analysis, and our testing will then give a certificate of analysis of what, what is in what was given to us. How, and the safety of that is stipulated by the state, and we basically tell them whether they pass or fail those stipulations. So we do not have any holdings in any of these other types of companies, hence to remain independent of that whole process. So these samples are between 1 to 3 grams, depending on the type of analysis. Some may do an à la carte, they want to check to see whether what they're growing will be within compliance, and then there are the ones that are fully for the compliance, as we mentioned. All of this strictly regulated by the state, reported to the state, and we follow in compliance every step of the way. Now, this is a 10,000-square-foot piece of property that we're looking to move into, this, on this second floor. How much sample does someone need in order to be running a proper business? And if I were to maximize that space, optimize it to do the most amount of business that I could, if I were to take all of those small samples and group it together, while I have never done it myself to know, I can estimate and calculate to the best of my abilities and inflate that as well, that it would be no more than a bag about yay big. I believe I'm on camera, so that way it's for, for the record, okay? You know, there's plenty of logs out there for how much is a kilogram when put together, and so forth. The household limit is 10 ounces, and we are looking to have an estimated no more than five or six times that, okay? Which, when put all together, comes to that manageable amount. And how will we be mitigating all of this from a security standpoint? You know, it's not a large amount, but it is an amount that needs to be secure. As I mentioned, we will be following chain-of-custody-esque procedures to receive the product. Once received, it'll be properly cataloged, and the state has come forth with its software that it has purchased called METRC, M-E-T-R-C. Anything that, that we do in touching a sample, we scan their barcode that is produced for the lot number and so on, and that automatically is translated to the state and to the customer itself. We take those samples and then we secure them in our freezer room, which will have a vault-esque appearance to it and structure, so that that way it has significant amounts of security in place, that once we put it in there, what's more is, we are essentially inactivating that product. By putting it into these freezers, which are minus 80 degrees Celsius, so not 80 degrees like it was outside in Fahrenheit, much, much colder, what this minus 80 degrees Celsius does is it will make the product significantly brittle to the touch, easy for grinding and manipulating further down. The smell that potentially could come off it will reduce significantly. And we leave that to incubate for, you know, several hours, overnight, let's say, right? We then take that and we put it through our extraction process to pull out what are, what is within this plant, right? So that way we can see what is then potentially able to be consumed by an individual from the lot that is being tested. Just to show a bit of our workflow here, so we are at the extraction stage that I'm speaking here. And both with the freezing process and with the extraction, these then become unsuitable for construction, for consumption. We put them inside of our organic solvents, that is part of the extraction phase, and at that point, you have completely neutralized the smell, you have made it into a case that it would be extremely difficult for someone to reverse what we have already done, and it is purely at this stage able to be manipulative, manipulated for analytical testing, for which case we would then put it to the analysis, and we would produce our reports and put it to the waste. As I mentioned, we submitted our waste plan to the city, and it was accepted. We planned on having nothing, and again, let me emphasize that, nothing of our waste going into the wastewater within, within this city. This is something that is very well-practiced within the pharmaceutical industry, that everything will go into properly filtered, invented to that filter. We call them carboys, they're these larger jugs, that if they were to be put together, they would go to a satellite containment, which if I flip back, you'll see that we have set aside a waste chamber there, right? And that waste chamber will be similarly secured, much like our freezer rooms. Okay? And that waste will then, a third-party vendor would come through, just like with any other type of lab or chemistry setup, to properly take it away and take it to be properly recycled. Because I mentioned I went to Salem State earlier, and they really beat into me, you know, our environmentally friendly and green practices here. So we want to be optimally recycling our chemical waste, so that that way, you know, those solvents can be reused for, for future experiments and so on. And as I mentioned, these reports that we are producing are both electronically sent to the customer as well as the state, so that that way there's no funny business in, as far as editing or anything like that. And with that, I'd like to close with our mission statement, which is, our mission as an independent testing lab is to assure our customers, and by extension, the world of consumers, that all of our tested products are of the highest caliber for quality and safety. We strive to be leaders in our field and maintain a vigilant and cutting-edge approach in all of our practices. I will now concede for any questions that may be had, and we can run through potentially the memo that was provided. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to touch base on the memo then?
However you'd like to proceed.
Sure. Why don't you touch base on the memo?
Sure.
Anything that, I mean, they, that they submitted on the memo, obviously, some of it's, as you indicated, you got to prove it by the fire department, you got to prove it by the police department, you got to prove by solid ways. You had the host agreement, so a lot of it in here is, and they indicated how you were, you know, before us, before, back in January, and then how the matter was, it didn't work out in that site, and basically you're coming up with the same type of proposal here with similar requests. And I think you answered the question about the marijuana samples, and I think you brought that up in your presentation. Oh, then the only other question they really had was, who's going to be the community liaison, who will provide? who provide, as director of security, I think I said you would be at first, and then who would take care of it after that? And the question was, were there going to be any exterior modifications to the outside of the building? I think that's basically it. So, I think what you said, there'll be no, any exterior modification, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so who will be taking over the director of security after?
We don't have someone lined up at the time, but we do promise and put forth that we will be in full communication with the city, that upon any changes of that, we will notify the city as to who the liaison would be and who our head of security. As we have yet to build out, we haven't moved forward with that employment process, but one of the things that we do have to put in our goals for the state is that we promise to follow through with a fair screening of our candidates as far as diversity planning, and we look forward to finding that excellent applicant that we can then introduce you at that time.
So you have nobody else who wants to speak on behalf of the applicant at this time? I know yourself, Mr. Brown spoke. Anybody else? No?
I don't know that we have anyone else on the line or in the room, but I do see several of our members here. I don't know if anyone would like to speak. I do see my mother calling in, who...
Something's ready?
We care very much about this Lowell community, you know, my father being the Greek Orthodox priest at Holy Trinity.
Yeah, I recall. As we said last time, when you hear lots to like about Lowell, right?
Yeah, yeah, we definitely want to bring good business and good experiences to our city, who we've really fell in love with this past 10 years.
So at this point in time, what I'll do is I'll open up to the public and see who wants to speak in favor and against, and then after that, I will turn over to the board members for their comments and questions, okay? So at this point in time, would anybody here like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none at that time? Anybody here?
If we're members of the organization, are we allowed to speak in favor?
Anybody can speak in favor if they like. Alls you have to do is give us your name and address.
My name is Linda Pelicudas, 36 Jox Road, Tinsborough, Massachusetts, and I strongly support this application.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Don't laugh.
Anybody else like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none at this point in time? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone, please.
Members of the board, Attorney George Theodoro. I'm here appearing on behalf of the abutter at 1201 Westford Street, HK Realty, that owns the office building next door. Thank you very much, Dr. Pelicudas, for that excellent presentation. This has nothing to do with respect to anything with respect to your excellent credentials that you presented in front of the board. I am here also with Attorney Phil Silverman, who will be speaking as well. It is our position that this use at this site, at 1255, 1115 Westford Street, would have a negative impact upon our site next door at 1201 Westford Street. As you know, that our site was permitted, and this board did an excellent job...
You're in your own little world. You never told me you're in a crime. Okay, but why do you...
This board did an excellent job in vetting that application. We were before the board three times or four times with a public hearing, and that all the issues that were presented at that, that through that application were thoroughly vetted. And the issues that I'm specifically getting at is our respect to the special permit issues with respect to traffic flow, safety, and parking. I don't believe those were addressed at all. It was summarily discussed that, I heard the landlord's attorney speak, that he believes that the applicant fully met the criteria. He presented a conclusion to you. There was no information presented, and that's specifically why we are here tonight. We are making the argument that the application is deficient in that we need more information with respect to the parking that is associated with this specific use for this applicant, and with respect to the traffic flow, because we believe, and Attorney Silverman will address this with you, with this respective views for this testing lab, which he has expertise on, as how this facility will work, and how this facility, when it's busy and up to speed, will have an impact upon our site next door. Parking was a tremendous issue with respect to my client's parking lot and how it would be used. We went to the extent to have 33 spaces for the tenant that was permitted, as well as 12 additional spaces across the street. Carl Street behind this, both of these buildings is continually impacted with overflow parking, and we don't believe that, we believe that this use, as it is presented right now, without any type of mitigation presented and more information, is going to impact the abutter next door, HK Realty at 1201 Westford Street. So I would like Mr. Silverman to come up and speak, and he'll present you with additional information with respect to the deficiency of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you. My name is Phil Silverman. I'm here from the law firm of Vicente Cedarburg. I represent a company called Full Harvest Moons, which is a tenant of Mr. Theodoro's client. It's a cannabis retail business at 1201 Westford Street. And my expertise is in the cannabis area. I work for a law firm that is a national law firm that specializes in cannabis, and we have offices all over the country who've been doing this since the legalization of cannabis. I work in the Boston office, and we represent about 100 clients in Massachusetts alone, worked with almost 100 cities and towns in permitting retailers and cultivators and delivery companies and testing companies as well. And this particular project is of significant interest as a testing company. As the doctor mentioned to you, there's only four licensed testing companies in Massachusetts right now, and so I can see why the doctor wants to get into this industry, but I would note that as a result of the demand for these services here, and it's a huge demand right now, that this is not going to be an insignificant operation as far as its impact on the surrounding area here. Many of you may recall that this board previously approved my client's retail establishment next door at 1201, and you may also be aware that that special permit has been appealed by the landlord of the property next door, this prospective tenant's landlord. And the grounds of that appeal were that there were significant traffic problems in the area, and so I just find it a bit unusual that landlord would make those assertions about traffic in the area, and now he's trying to have a tenant come in with a very significant marijuana use that, you know, as I explained to you, some of the details of that use, I think is going to potentially impact and have those types of impacts and cause more traffic problems. So I would suggest to you that the problem with the application in its current form is that it really avoids all of these issues that the applicant's landlord has been talking about. I did see a site plan that was provided for this, it's from 2007. I've read the transportation demand management plan, but there's really not enough in either of those that shows you how the site's going to be used, where the parking that's associated with the use is going to be located, how traffic is going to flow around the parking areas, the impacts on pedestrian access. These issues are left hanging. What is clear from the materials presented is that this is not an innocuous or insignificant use, and it's significantly different from what exists there now, which is strictly professional offices. So again, for context, the application indicates the applicant is leasing 10,000 square feet of space, and the hosted community agreement that's provided suggests they're going to be employing 15 to 20 full-time and 5 to 10 part-time employees. This is not a small testing operation. There's a good reason why it's not a small testing operation. Testing labs are a marijuana use, but they are not the type of marijuana use that generate the profits that marijuana retailers and cultivators generate. There's no wholesale or retail markup of the product here. The company gets paid for testing services only, so these companies make a profit by increasing the volume of testing. The more customers they contract with, the more samples they get to test, which in turn increases the volume of activity on this property. And as I said, there's a very high demand for that right now. And yet in all of the materials presented by the applicant, we see no projections as to the numbers of daily deliveries and unloadings of these samples. I did hear something about the amount, and it's a very small amount, but that's not telling you the number of deliveries. If this were a retail site for marijuana, I'm sure the board would be seeking information on the number of vehicle trips at a minimum, and I suggest you need that here too, but that information is missing. The narratives provided to the board indicate that there's going to be pickups of samples by this company by between two to five courier vans, which will be parked on-site. We're left to wonder where they will park on-site, there's no detail about any of that, or where they'll park at night. I believe there's no overnight parking in the HRC district, so I'm not sure where the vehicles are going to be stored at night. We also know from the narratives that there's going to be other transportation activity at the site. The site's going to be used for sales meeting with potential customers and status meetings. There's going to be vehicles from service providers for removal of waste associated with the chemical solvents used in the daily testing operations of the business. The doctor explained that there is some waste removal from the facility. There's no description of how often vehicles are going to visit the site to empty the waste that's produced. So again, when you really look at the numbers here with those activities, especially at full employment, you could see an average of 30 people or more on this site, which is quite frankly significantly more than you might expect to see at my client's next-door retail use. So I find this sort of lack of information about parking particularly curious. Again, all that's been provided is a site plan prepared in 2007. It shows a couple of different potential areas with parking spaces set forth, and those two areas are on either side of my client's site at Full Moons. There's little more about parking there. We've seen a non-binding letter of intent between the applicant and the landlord, but it has little to say other than that the tenant will have access to 30 parking spaces. Are they designated parking spaces? There's 50 spaces on its site. Are there 30 designated there? If so, where are they? Are they shared with other people at that site? If so, have they provided the shared parking calculations that's required by the city's zoning ordinance? If they're all on-site, if all of those 30 are on-site at 1115 Westford, then the 30 that are going to be used by this applicant leaves 20 spaces at that site. That's 20 spaces for 20,000 square feet of other office use on that property. Just doing the calculation at one space for 400 square feet for an office use, you'd need another 50 spaces on that site. They don't exist. There would only be 20 other spaces there. Will the applicant instead be using nearby lots that are also owned by its landlord to supplement its parking? Where are those spaces? How many spaces will be used there? To what other uses are those spaces currently dedicated? I know that there's significant amounts of parking that's being done there. There's an apartment complex right there. There's parking on Carl Street. I just drove by today. It's there, I'm told, at night as well. What impact are these two separate lots on either side of my client going to have on parking, traffic, pedestrian access in the area, not just for my client, but for the apartment next door? Also want to point out, there's some other issues here on the security front, questions as to whether this is going to meet Cannabis Control Commission's security requirements. I remind you, this site is on the second floor of an office building with multiple other uses, meaning that the delivery of the samples will likely have to be through interior accessways, which are not screened off from other uses in the building. How is that going to work? The transportation demand management plan explains how the marijuana samples are retrieved from customers, but there's no detail on the unloading of the samples back at this site. Do these deliveries go through a secure loading dock at the back of the property? That's what most other marijuana uses do? Or do the applicant's employees just walk in through a front door of the building with samples? And if it's the latter, are there parking spaces dedicated to these vehicles near the door to facilitate a quick entry to the building? What if they're forced to park farther away? Is there onsite exterior security to insist and ensure the safe entry to the building? Are the interior stairs or the elevator to the second floor secure? What if there's no parking available at all when one of these vehicles arrives? I would suggest to you that the narratives that have been provided are sort of some of the boilerplate that we tend to see in my office regarding retail sites and cultivation sites, but they really haven't been modified to consider this site or a testing lab in particular. Transport deliveries are one of the biggest security concerns in the industry, but the average retail dispensary only handles these types of deliveries once or twice a week. This facility appears likely to have many multiples of that every single day. Bottom line is, we need to see more. My client's permit is approved, it's proceeding with a use in the area that the applicant's landlord states is a traffic concern. Under the circumstances, I would expect to see a traffic study, a parking plan, and delivery procedures to ensure that this use will not create the problem that the applicant's landlord appears to fear. And I understand that some of these plans have to remain confidential as to security, but most of the information I'm requesting is not confidential, it's routinely a part of what's required for a marijuana use across the state. And I would just close by reminding the board that one of the key criteria in the zoning that the city's bylaw states is a consideration of traffic flow and safety, including loading and parking. I would just submit that there isn't enough information here to determine these issues at this time, and I would ask the board to require further information before this proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. We'll get back to you. I want to see who else wants to speak first, okay? So we try to listen to everybody first before we go back to rebuttal, okay? Anybody else like to speak in opposition to this project on Westford Street? I don't see anybody else here in the audience. We have a man on Zoom who may want to speak. Anybody in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Nobody on the Zoom? Okay, yes, sir, you may rebut.
Respectfully, sirs, I understand your position. It saddens me that this is the first we're hearing from your office in any capacity. We did have a host community meeting that we notified all abutters prior to our amendment of our host community agreement, and we heard no such opposition. We did everything within our power to reach out, and I'm saddened that this is how we have to meet. I hope to dissuade much of the claimed holes that were mentioned. You're right to bring up confidentiality. Much of what you spoke to would be within a security plan. That security plan was hand-delivered to the Lowell Police Department in order to ensure further security. Past that, we are an open book. We are fully transparent, and much of the details that you asked for have been addressed. I believe that the key aspect here, with respect to those who spoke, is the nature of a testing lab is vastly different than a retail establishment. Hence, there is a differentiation within the zoning code. For example, we do not stand in the way of your client, or you, sir, in potentially being our neighbors, because as a lab, we do not have the 1,000-foot distance requirement between retail establishments, okay? We thought of these things, and we did not want to stand in anybody's way. I would disagree with you as far as the standpoint of the traffic flow being much, much more than an office building. I've been working in labs for about a decade now. I currently work in one, as my day job. And when I put forward that I will have... And when I put forward that I will have X number of employees within our plan, it's because I'm taking into account what the zoning requirement asks as far as what is required for parking. I will turn over to Jeff Brown in a moment to speak to the existing parking. As I showed in my presentation, there is designated parking. The spots are counted. They are part of the site plan. So that is as far as the employees and the vehicles that will be kept by ATL on the premises. Now, as for the deliveries, you are absolutely right that deliveries do happen, but deliveries also happen at office buildings. And we do not want to impede the work of our neighbors within the building, let alone on that street. Therefore, deliveries would be made in a convenient time that it does not impede traffic. We are happy to say, we did not commit to those times because we wanted to make sure that we were cognizant of what was around us once business was operational. If that is the desire that this board wishes us to declare times that we receive deliveries, I don't know how fair that exactly is, as that stipulation is not put forth for a standard office building. Okay? Whether I'm sitting at a desk or whether I'm sitting at a lab bench, we function very much the same way as any other office does. Okay? And as far as the deliveries for our samples and products, you're absolutely correct. This is a burgeoning industry, and which is why I spoke not to what we will do at our outset in filling only a partial portion of that space with our equipment and our samples. I spoke to the entirety of what we wish to fill. So I'm talking years down the road. Okay? If I were to maximize and optimize this, then our goal, because not only are we worried about receiving the samples at a good time and so forth and not bothering our customers, is that we don't want to bother our neighbors, yourselves potentially being those, which is why I have already committed to ownership that we will make every effort to schedule our incoming deliveries to be outside of standard business hours, so we are not impeding the flow of traffic. If there's any more questions that this board would like to ask that has not been clarified based on the points that were brought up by this gentleman, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. I believe that several of these have already been answered when we gave our presentation on 59 Lowe's Way. I'm happy to rehash them. And what's more is, there's significant detail on much of what was brought up in the plans that have already been approved by the various departments. To with that, I would like to turn it back over to the board if they have any other questions or concerns on our plan.
We'll get to those, sir.
Thank you.
That's how we handle a meeting. Yep. And I mean, just going back to Lowe's Way, that, I have no reflection on tonight's meeting, that's all. Okay? There was a plan that was approved that didn't go forward.
Yes, sir.
Just over with the plan, we start from scratch. It's like starting a ballgame all over again.
Absolutely.
Okay? So, okay. Does anybody else want to speak? Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Okay. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to any of the board members if they have any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I...
Yes, Mr. Fichette.
Thank you. I appreciate the detail on your background, and I know the board asked a lot of questions, and we were very intrigued by the entire process the last time you came before us on Wellman Ave, behind Lowe's. Obviously, this is a different location. You are here for a site plan review and special permit. Not dissimilar to retail shops and manufacturing facilities. It's completely new to the city, to the state. Not a lot of, I think, a lot of good data out there. When the applicant next door came before us, we put them through quite a bit, and your potential landlord was making sure that we did that on top of it, because there was really just a lot of unknown factors. And we're still, you know, we're still trying to get an idea of what the impact is on a lot of these facilities. And arguably, as more facilities become online, you know, demand starts to spread, and will it be, you know, an impact as great as when they first open up? Now, this is a lab facility, you know, I was just, my concern is, as we talk about site plan review, is really, you know, you're talking generalities and, site plan review is pretty cut and dry, so you're not doing any external changes to the building, so that's, you know, one part. But one very important facet is, the special permit and site plan review is how the traffic flow, parking, and loading can affect the site, the safety of the site. That is a unique location over there. That's a slice of a pie in a very, very busy area. We recognize that anytime anything has come before us in that area. We have looked at other projects as well. I was trying to do the math. Again, as you stand here, I don't think you know how much product you're going to be analyzing.
Oh, I do. If I may on that point.
Let him...
When you're ready.
Please. You get your chance to speak. It's his turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
That's probably a seizure.
So what you told us is that this was it. Okay. So, and then I'm looking at the per ounce, you, so how many pounds, and depending upon how many facilities are in the state, and whether or not you're even going to test outside the state, I don't even know. But, and then I'm just trying to figure out, based on how many pounds, and then if you're doing, I don't know, three-ounce sampling, and then that 21 trips a day, is that, do you do that daily, or you do that weekly? Interesting concept. I'm assuming that that's how you're going to generate your income, is the more testing you do, the more income you're going to generate, and it's going to make your business successful, and you're going to be able to hire people and employ them and flourish there. The thing is, we don't understand the impact of that. Nothing's been presented here from an engineering perspective that gives us anything to go on at all. So, and especially in a sensitive site such as that. So, I'll be honest with you, I actually took a picture of what you had up on the phone with the color code to try to blow it up, try to figure out, and we've got the site plan here. I have no idea what the impact of your employees are on this site as presented. And I guess I'll ask you the question, something you could bring up and show us specifically. In other words, what is the current demand on the site? Do we have an analysis that shows that? And then what's available? You know, I went out there on Sunday morning, and that street behind there, there's nothing, I mean, the cars are all over that street. That's a Sunday morning. You know, so the parking lot's empty on Sunday morning, but it definitely, you know, and we took that seriously when the abutte came before us. Why wouldn't we take it seriously when you come before us? This is a different site than Wellman Ave, completely different. So, you know, from that perspective, there's very few items here that you're presenting that really fall under the purview of this board. You know, most of it is the security, which was approved. I'd like to have staff give us, and I understand from a security perspective, not being able to go public, but I would like some assurance from the staff to, before I make a decision, that some of these loading issues have been addressed. And I understand the Lowell Police Department approved it, but I'm not even quite sure some of the extent of some of the plans that are being approved, because I still think there's a lot of unknowns as to what is really needed here. So I, from my perspective, I would not be prepared to actually make a decision based on the impact. I don't know the impact. If I'm voting here tonight, and maybe my fellow board members are a lot more intelligent than I am on this issue right now, but I don't know what the impact on this site is. Right? It's a very sensitive site, and I don't know what your activity is going to be. I truly don't. So, from that perspective, I'm not prepared. I think we need to have some traffic analysis presented to us. And unfortunately, gentlemen, are we any closer hiring a traffic engineer here in the city of Lowell?
We are not.
We're not. Anybody has a traffic engineering degree out there, feel free to apply. You know, that's, I find that very, puts us in a tough position here on the board. So, from that perspective, and I know we went through, you know, the operation, and we were concerned about odor control before, I mean, you really intrigued us and answered all our questions that we had the last time. I certainly, board members may have some additional questions, but that was my biggest concern as this was presented, as I was looking at the material, and as, I didn't see anything presented here this evening that would enlighten me in that respect. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Any other board members have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one...
Please.
I have one question. I think it's for staff. I thought that this came up when we looked at the project at Lowe's Way, but is there any conflict with the retail establishment being, you know, within those 500 or 1,000 square feet adjacent to the lab facility?
Yeah, so when it first came up at Lowe's Way, I believe my colleague Francesca was working on it. Originally, we did believe that it was, but after sitting down with the head of the department, Eric, as well, who is also a lawyer, it doesn't seem like the zoning ordinance applies because this is a testing facility and it's treated so differently under the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that clarification. I appreciate that. And then I would generally agree with Jerry's comments. I do think that the traffic and parking is different at a testing facility than it is at a retail establishment, but I think understanding what's required for the parking at this building and what's being provided, if we could have clarification on that, I think that would help understand the application better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members, any comments? Caleb?
Sure. So I think along the line of Member Fichette and also Member Galivan have mentioned, I would think that like, you know, treating this other type of use as this similar, that would need a special permit, we want to analyze like, how many parking you need. Staff can help on that, on interpreting the zoning ordinance, and how many parking is proposed or can be provided, and then how many employers or how many trips that we can deal, and how they would go in and out of the, on the site. So those are the basic information that we need in order to make a decision based on, well, ideally with the help of a traffic engineer. And so I agree with my fellow members that this is a necessary analysis, not any special, like, you know, requirement to you, but as in all other type of businesses that we need to look at is the traffic and parking issues. And then, aside from that, I also want to check with the staff and whether there is a stormwater permit on this site now that, you know, a special permit in preview, in our purview. And then, because one of the condition in the, in the previous approved site or site plan and special permit is the stormwater that issue, that the applicant shall obtain a stormwater permit and shall provide stormwater improvement proportionate to the investment in the property. So I wonder whether that will be applicable onto this site as well, so.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the stormwater team would like that added as a condition. The applicant was put in contact with the stormwater team, I believe, early last week. So, you know, they'll be meeting to discuss that, and that's definitely on their radar right now.
I just want to make sure we don't miss any details as we move forward.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And I, yes, that will be all, Chairman.
Thank you, Caleb. Thank you. Russell, any questions or comments?
I would like to add what my compatriots on the planning board have mentioned, is just some information about parking, when deliveries are going to be written, some sort of response format I think would be helpful for this board to help analyze just how your laboratory is going to operate on sort of like a 24-hour, whether, 24-hour basis or whether it's going to be a nine-to-five business operation. I think that'd be helpful for this board in the form of some sort of, some sort of traffic study, or, I was taking a look at the lease that was provided, and frankly, having a hard time understanding the handwriting on it, so I don't know if that can be clarified as well, so we can have a better understanding of the agreement between your landlord and your business operation, and like, exactly how many parking spots are willing to be allocated and where they will be. So I think that information would be helpful to this board. I know I would appreciate it. That's all for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have Mr. Lockout on Zoom. Is Mr. Lockout have any comments and any questions?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to say that I concur with, you know, the observations of my colleagues and that we need additional quantitative data regarding the operation of this lab and its impact on the site in terms of traffic, traffic flow, parking, and that type of thing. To evaluate a site plan adequately and thoroughly, we just simply need that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lockout. So, sir, my opinion, you're caught in a classified. So what happened was, the other building came in last summer. We had three public hearings, two and a half hours apiece for three nights. We approved it all, and all the issues that raised about parking on Carl Street and traffic was everything the Princeton property brought up. So all the ammunition that they shot at them, they're shooting back at you. Crossfire. That's my opinion. That's a short version of what's going on here. It's illegal stuff. Okay, I'm a lawyer. I've got five lawyers in my family. I can read through, I don't have to look at this print here to figure out what everybody's doing here tonight. Very simple, okay? They appealed the decision after we approved that, upon their request, that they have appointment-only deliveries, which they requested us to do, and we did it over their objection. And then they go on appeal, looks they have everything to do. So now they're saying, every issue that Mr. Brown brought up regards to Carl Street, the parking, the traffic, is all self-serving. They're using the exact same words that Mr. Brown used all last summer, back again, Princeton properties, and you just have to need a poor guy who wants to get the lease and go in the middle and do your job.
Right.
That's the way I see it, okay? And I mean, I probably no offense to you, I don't think they're taking offense to you. I just, yeah, that's why I say you're in the classified. I mean, but I understand where they want to say, you know, we gave due consideration when they made, the applicant come back with parking off-site, they made them do deliveries by appointment and everything else, and all those issues that Mr. Brown brought up were very valid issues. So for us to try to ignore some of them tonight, I don't think that's pertinent upon us to just say, well, we stuck it to them, but now here we don't have to apply to them on this one. I know it's a different news, I know their news, I've been sitting here for 37 years, I get all that. Someone doesn't have to lecture me on that. I can read just as well as anybody else. And obviously, nothing has taught me in law school, they made it through law school and the bar exam, so I guess now I work, you know, working in the courts for years and doing appeals, so I know all the appeals work in appeals court. I've worked with judges on the appeals court, so I know all the legality of it all. But if, I think, you know, some of the questions they did raise were raised before, and the question would be the traffic flow, the parking, and all that is still an issue up there. I can remember when we approved Princeton Properties. I was sitting here then. And the issue at the time was, they didn't have enough snow removal, and we were assured that they would take it off-site. So, I mean, it's so far back that this, that I've been involved with this issue of Princeton Properties and their neighbors. So, but I can understand what the applicants have brought up. I know the case is sitting in court and had nothing to do with us, and now we made our decision, and we're sitting in court and what's going on with that outside of our purview and out of our hands. I mean, I know our law department, it defends our side of it, but I think some of the issues that are brought up by the board members are valid issues because they were all raised at the previous meetings on this site. I mean, you're abuttes, so if it's traffic issues, parking issues, they're valid points. And we took those all into consideration when we sat here all last summer for three consecutive meetings for over two hours at a time. So I think that for some of the board members to ask for more clarification of the traffic flow, the loading, and the parking situation, if you have that many people, and how are you going to get the stuff up to the second floor and out? I think they're valid points. So I think that's something that if we can get some more information on, would be very helpful. Like I say, I know nothing on the exterior of the building is being done, but like you say, this isn't just a site plan, it's a special permit as well. And so I know there's a lot more for us to consider on the special permit, so. there's a lot more for us to consider on the special permit, so.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have to say on that matter at this point. Any board members have any follow-up comments as a result of what the other board members have said? Hearing none? So, what would the board request?
I'd like to speak a bit more, if possible.
Sure, go ahead.
First of all, I was receiving a notice that Jeff Brown did have a couple of words to say, if that's all right for him to hop back in. Jeff?
Yes, if the board can hear me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I can hear you, Jeff, how are you?
I think, I think you're, you're exactly right, this is somewhat of, you know, we're going to give it back to you, what you gave to us, I don't think that's necessarily fair, I think they're completely disproportionate in their, in the volume of use, and I just think it's being blown way out of proportion. The zoning standard is to have one parking space for every 500 feet, 500 square feet is lease space, at 10,000, that's 20 parking spaces, that's what zoning requires. As Mr. Silverman, Attorney Silverman, mentioned, we have 50 spaces on-site, and I believe our upper parking lot has 40 spaces. So, there is plenty of parking spaces for 20 employees. They don't move in, out, like retail buyers at a cannabis dispensary. The notion that they're creating excessive traffic, or that we would have a full-blown traffic impact analysis for 20 employees, in my opinion, is an overreaction. Should they, should we show traffic flows, and where people are going to park, and where cars are going to be, and things of that nature, a fair question. To, to spend the exorbitant amount of money for a traffic study for 20 employees just really stretches the bounds of reasonableness. Yes, there were traffic studies when the dispensary was proposed, that dispensary generated over 900 vehicle trips per day. I don't want to relive last summer, neither does anyone else, but that was 900 vehicle trips a day, a day, these are 20 employees, we have 20 vehicle trips a day. It's not, it's so disproportionate, it's just not realistic. So, we do have plenty of parking, we've owned both a parking lot under our building with 50 spaces, we also have owned for over 20 years, a parking spot in back of 1201 Westford Street for over 20 years as well. Currently, on our first floor, we have an accounting firm with approximately 30 employees. Princeton Properties occupies the fourth floor, we have somewhere around 30 employees and there'll be 20 here. So, with over 90 spaces, we have plenty of parking to accommodate this laboratory. Again, I can't stress it enough, the notion that 20 employees is somehow going to be disruptive to the neighborhood really just stretches the imagination. Does the board have an obligation to ask this applicant to respond to the same things that we asked the dispensary to respond to? I understand the chairman's point, it's a matter of fairness, and I, I, I understand the point, that we can't, cannot be ignored, but I think as the members consider this, it needs to be considered in the proper perspective. These are 20 employees, we have after-hour deliveries of product, we have two or three cars, and we have, you know, we have fully vetted this, it would be illogical on Princeton's part to say, we're going to take on a tenant to the sacrifice of our other existing tenants just because we like this lab. We have another, another tenant to be concerned about, and we have our own employees to be concerned about. We wouldn't, you know, make a decision to accept this if it was going to bother our own existing operations, it doesn't. There is plenty of room for the laboratory, both on-site and in the ancillary parking areas, and so, it fits the zoning. The notion of traffic flow, I guess, to the extent a diagram can be prepared, I just would have the board hesitate to require a full traffic impact study like a Vennett Associates or something like that, because it just seems very disproportionate for 20 people. I don't know what more to say, this is, I think it's clear to see what this is, this is tit-for-tat as to what we did, and they want to do that. I respect them, they have the legal right to do it, but I don't, I think you can, everyone can easily see what this is.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And if I can add on that, please?
Sure.
You're asking very valid and fair questions as far as, you know, what, the word delivery, it brings a question, right? A question that I can very easily answer here and save us all a study, and I'm on the record for it, okay? We are amenable to several different circumstances to reduce traffic impact. As Mr. Brown mentioned, we don't anticipate having, he said three, worst-case scenario, five cars, and they're not trucks, they are cars, because the samples are not big enough, we're not, we're not cooling down, anyway, I'm getting in the weeds. Mr. Brown has brought up and vetted with us the fact that we do not want to be disrupting business with said deliveries. So, this is a matter of, the employees would come on-site in the morning, they would pick up the designated unmarked vehicles, to then go out and make their rounds through the Commonwealth. As mentioned earlier, Mr., am I pronouncing it Fischette?
Yes.
Okay. We do not go outside of the state, it is illegal to bring a Schedule I substance across state lines, as that is a federal crime.
Federal violation.
So, we will only be servicing people within the Commonwealth. We do have routes that will be randomized, and this is mentioned within the security plan, in order to reach out to the Commonwealth at large. We plan on those cars making a full day's trip before they return, hence, as Mr. Brown said, after-hours drop-off, okay? So, when we say nine-to-five, that is for your standard employee who would be running the typical analysis, but at the same time, access to the building needs to be there, should, in case of an emergency, right? Other things that are, you know, standard practice in managing hazardous materials, such as organic solvents. So, when I say after-hours deliveries, that's where the cars come back after hours to reduce the impact on traffic. There'll be a rotating basis of a couple of employees to maintain chain of custody in order to scan in the product and put it in our freezers, and then, we go home for the day. So, it is not going to be 24-hour so much, so, unless there is an emergency. I expect that this is more of a nine-to-nine situation, and only for those few who would stay on for the drop-off and the logging of the, and the cataloging of the samples for chain of custody. Past that, as I mentioned before, we function very much the same way that an office building does. And, a standard office building, to my knowledge, doesn't always require, if there is existing parking spaces that we are not changing, and we're not going to ever ask for more, and let that go on the record, okay? Then, do you ask for a traffic study from every office use? I don't actually, I'm, I don't know that question, sorry, the answer to that question, but I don't believe that that's the case. Peter, can you speak to that?
It all depends on the location of the site. Every site is germane, every site is different, yep?
Well, but the, the use, though, the use is much akin to an office use, and it is approved for an office.
We understand the use, I mean, we're land-use regulators, we understand land-use.
Sorry.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't mean to be redundant.
We do, you know?
What's more is, you spoke to our capacity, we are limited by the instrumentation that we can fit in a space. So, the number of samples, you know, this is the actual size, I can count the worst-case scenario of number of samples that we would have, and those samples in any given day should be no more than 1,000 samples. I can fit 1,000 samples in two cars that are coming at the end of the day, if I were to pick, but I'm not picking up those 1,000 samples daily, I'm picking up maybe 100, or up to 300 at capacity.
And I, if I, hey, don't want to interrupt you, but I'm going to. See, none of this is in the proposal here, none of this.
Oh, so what?
So, I appreciate what you're telling us here this evening, but what's presented is any kind of a plan, how this is going to impact any kind of flow, and, nothing is presented to us, all right? And, and, and I appreciate the, the, the extent of the knowledge that you have, and you're throwing this stuff out off the cuff. There's been nothing that's thought out, that's something that we can review, that appears to be, okay, it's going to have a minimal impact, it's going to, that's all, that's all I'm looking for now. Not necessarily, I don't think the word "traffic study" came out of my mouth, all right? But, what I'd like to see is a parking analysis, all right? And I'd like to see some sort of idea of memorialized, presented to the board, how many trips do you anticipate? How many vehicles will there be, fleet vehicles? If you've exited, entered and exited that site, it's terrible. It's, on a Sunday morning, it's terrible pulling out of there.
I agree.
So, so, you know, we're, we're, it's under traffic, right, for special permit, traffic flow and safety included parking. I, you know, you're, again, you're throwing out because we're asking these questions, and I appreciate your effort to try to address it, but, but, what I want to see, at least for the, the next meeting, is something presented for, for the staff to look at, again, not having a traffic engineer on-site in the city is not a good thing for anybody, for the applicants, for staff, for the board. But I want to have something that says, this is what is currently the usage on the site, what the demand is, I don't know if there's empty, open spots or not, it is a little bit different.
They are designated.
It is a little bit different as far as office use, because you're having deliveries that, I just, it's an industry that we're just not familiar with. And, and how many testing sites are within the, within the state?
Four.
Is it four? Are they all up and running?
Yeah.
So, do we have some idea even from those sites? We did that with, you know, get us some information from some of those sites. I mean, if there's an engineer, somebody to tell us, what are some of the, you know, what, what some of the impact where they're located, if there's any, it, it's minimal. But, what I'm just saying is, we don't have anything in front of us.
Well, much of this was provided in the security plan, sir.
Well, then, I, I'm not privy to it, and it falls under traffic flow and safety. So, one of the things I did comment is, I want to get some idea from DPD from that security plan, as far as those types of issues, delivery, the times of delivery, I understand we don't want to make that public knowledge perhaps, how that would be handled, if in fact, there is, is there going to be designated spots where you're going to park, I just want to know if they're going to be available to you, and what are some of the, the spots available, that's really what we're looking for.
If I may ask, Peter, this diagram here, I know was submitted in our packet. Was this not provided to the board originally? Because I, you mentioned that you had to take a screenshot off of it.
Right.
When it's dated January 8th, 2007?
No, no, I'm talking about your colored presentation.
I'm talking about the color presentation.
Yeah, I'm just blowing it up.
No, no, not that one, I'm talking about the color presentation.
You know, just to blow it up.
This is what I got in my packet, the plan is dated 2007.
Yep.
2007.
What, is this a parking plan?
He knows.
Okay. I have a plan that was given to me, but tonight's agenda dated 2007.
From a site plan.
Right.
Yeah, I have the same question too, is.
2007.
The color version on the PowerPoint, I, I couldn't find it. I, I don't know, maybe I missed it.
Yeah, maybe I missed it.
Yeah, Peter, can you please confirm that it was provided?
This is what we got, this is what I got. So, I mean, so you have a plan from 2007?
It's from 2007, when I reached out to Princeton, that's the last time they had it.
To me, I think it's a little outdated.
Linda, I believe you're on the line, you're the one who sent over the email submission? Can you confirm, please, on your end, that this was sent over to Peter's email?
When did we get this plan from?
That one was from Princeton Properties.
This, they submitted this application to us, Princeton Properties?
No, 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 they submitted that, that site plan detail, because I did not have that, but it is in, and that, I mean, I don't want to spin into another, you know, tangent, but it, it sort of begs the question of why this requires site plan review, because we're not changing anything to the exterior, we're, we're not changing anything as far as.
Because of the size of your building, the interior, is it over 10,000 square feet?
Okay.
Read it, 10,000 square feet, site plan review.
Thank you for that, I genuinely don't know, I'm a scientist, I'm, I'm trying my best here.
Yeah, okay. I mean, but, you know.
I mean no disrespect.
Yeah. Says it right in our documentation, documentation for site plan review, any building anything over 10,000 square feet, okay? I mean, you can meet your criteria, I'm not here to explain the criteria, when planning staff gives it to you, it tells you what site plan review is, what special permit review is, okay? So, you have a security plan with the police department? Great with the police department, and the police department are the ones who approve the site plan and the special permit? No. What information do you share with them? Some of that, I know the security department about it, I understand the reasons for that thing, but when it comes to parking layout, flow of the area, traffic, how it flows, is that really a security plan that this board cannot be privy to? Is that above our knowledge to understand how a car drives in a site like this? I think that's a reasonable, minimal request by a board member.
I will say, in the, in the original email we received, I don't have that colored graphic that came in to me and Fran.
All right.
But I will also say, DPD is not, I, I didn't know if the board members were unclear, we're not privy to the security plan either, it's only.
I understand, I understand that, and I understand the security plan, but, the security plan, they don't get into how many parking spaces you have. How many police officers I know, and I know a lot of them, I worked with them for 40 years, and then went to school with them.
Well, and, the comment that was placed earlier as far as the LOI, since the letter of intent was edited by hand, we are being given 30 parking spaces, that is documented and was provided to the board.
Yeah. So, someone said, if you can show us on the plan, where those 30 parking spaces are going to be, are they going to be designated? It's a reasonable request.
Okay.
Don't you think?
May I ask, then, where, what type of analysis, other, other than that, are, would the board potentially be looking for, potentially, without officially asking for a report?
Well, I don't know what the board members are, but I'll let Jevvy pick up where he left off, go ahead, Jevvy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what I'd like to see is an, an analysis of the, the current use, in other words, on that site right now, during the day, at full, full capacity use, what's available, what is there? When they say there's 30 sites, they're giving you parking sites, are they off-site? Are they there? If in fact, are, are those spaces there? Are the delivery cars going to be on that site? Are they going to be off-site? How, you know, pedestrian access then, I mean, is there going to be a, a lot of, of, are those vehicles going to stay there overnight?
Are you asking?
Yes, yeah.
We do plan for them to stay overnight in their, in their designated spots.
Okay. I don't even know where that's going to be. So, you know, I'd like to know that, if there's going to be vehicles that are there overnight from a, from a, even from a, a, a safety perspective and lighting and, and all of that, so, again, it's just lack of detail.
Where those vehicles are, only just on that point, if I may.
So.
Can I, can I just ask the question, is that not a potential security issue, as those cars may, they are typically unmarked, and by asking for that specific detail, then you are asking us to disclose where they are, what they are, so on, that they may potentially be targeted?
The vehicle itself overnight, so I guess, I guess I don't know, all right? So, this is, this is something that, you know, we don't deal with, this is the first one that's ever come before us. So, one, I, at this point, through DPD, I got to find out what, what's been approved, I don't know how we're going to find out, but we got to find out something from the police department, you know, has this been addressed? And then, is there adequate, how is the, how is the flow going to be? This is unusual, this is unusual, never run across this.
I don't believe that it should be unusual, and I've said it time and again, but I, I meant that.
I'm out of opinions, sir. And we're entitled to it, and we're entitled to that when we vote.
It, it, it is a fact that labs operate very similarly to offices.
You don't have to keep telling us that.
Okay.
Okay, if you want to tell us four or five times, I think we heard it the first time, you can repeat it, repeat it, repeat it, it's not going to change anything.
Chairman, may I add a little?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I, I, you have been arguing it's a security issue, which is fine. I, I think, you know, we want to, you know, we want secure things to be secure. Uh, I think at the very least, you knew, do, like, your landlord have a due analysis of whether, what are the current tenants' units are? And also reviewing the zoning requirement of what actually they are required to have, right? I mean, those are existing units, before we even consider your part. And then, secondly, is that, um, and I think even if you don't provide the exact spot of where they will be, you, I, I think we need, we will need a narrative of how many trips, we don't even know where, but like, how many trips we turn in and out of from there. Um, and then, um, also is that, uh, for overnight parking, and I remember, um, Attorney Silverman mentioned that there is no overnight parking allowed. I, I don't know where that come from, but if that's the case, we need, we need to explore that. And then, also, kind of funny thing about security, if your, only your employees' cars is on site, it's not like people will not know who those cars belong to, right? So, at the end, we might, that, that question might be mute of like, where they actually park. And maybe the, and, and answer is that there is no designated parking anyway. But like, uh, I think the landlord can provide one part of the information, and, uh, we want to know from you is, uh, how do you add on top of that? And then, then we can do more analysis from, from those information. I don't know if that helps, but like, we, we try to, we will try to.
I will do everything.
Keep it secure, but we do need.
I will do everything in my ability to give whatever the board needs for this to move forward.
And our concern with parking and, and the traffic, that's our concern. And, you know, the police take care of the security part, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the fact that, yes, you know, just show us where, I mean, when those parking spots are going to be designated on site to your employees or someone else's, I don't think that's an issue.
So, are we just looking to, I mean, to that end, I, I guess what I'm trying to avoid here is, you know, ha- having to take up more of the board's time, uh, in, in these official meetings. And I know I've taken a lot of it tonight, so thank you very much for that, of course.
No problem on that, sir, no problem at all. But I think, I think most of the issues were, you know, where are your parking spots going to be on the site? How is the traffic going to generate, okay? If they're going to, are you encouraging to come in off Westford Street? You asking your employees to come in on Kyle Street? What the traffic flow is going to be on the site? We ask this on every site, whether it's a business site or anything else, okay? I mean, are they going to be designated parking spots? Uh, they just have to pull in and try to catch whoever parking spot they have on the site.
I believe that's the zoning requirement, is that they do need to be designated to the lab.
So if you can show on, 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 on the, on the plan, where they're going to be parking, where there's going to be on site, or off-site, what the traffic flow would be, where they're going to park, um, you know, the stuff of that, that nature. Coming back to the traffic study, I don't think it qualifies, I don't, I don't think it's necessary for a traffic study. I don't think you're bringing on enough traffic vehicles per a site that are qualified to request a traffic study. I mean, we've seen plenty of traffic studies on this site a year ago.
I'm, I'm not very familiar with them, so.
Are still available, and I'm sure Mr. Brown even has a copy of them. I'd be very surprised if he doesn't, and I'm sure he's listening to me as I speak, because he's pretty good at picking up what I say. So, I mean, those, those are available, okay? I mean, but they're, you know, like, a lot of times we ask for a stoplight, and they say, no, you can't because it doesn't meet the required amount of, um, cars. Same for traffic study, I mean.
I don't know if he's going to speak.
If you're going to have fifty cars, is that going to be enough for traffic?
I, I don't know if he's trying to speak, I see his box lit up on the Zoom call.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, you know, more of the layout of how it works on the site, where the cars are going to be, stuff of that nature, I mean, they brought up some questions, you know, so I mean, you're talking, you know, what, fifteen to twenty maybe full-time, five part-time? And then I know you have, actually, they're not vans that like, cover your cars, um, you know, how often the waste removal comes. Just so, we have a traffic flow pattern, which is in the purview of the planning board for site plan and special permit, you know? And, like I say, I know you're kind of in the crossfire, but I mean, I'm just saying, just some further basic issues, I think that the planning board members had said, can we get some more information on the flow on the site? That's what I think, what Mr. Fichette said, and the other board members that qualified to say, just give us some more information if you possibly could, and I'm sure Mr. Brown has most all that information at his fingertips. And that way, and I know the information you gave us tonight, a lot of it we didn't have purview to, and that's why Mr. Fichette just said, you know, if you can give us some of this, um, knowledge that you have on some type of plan or, or, or in a narrative, then basically, it, it covers and answers a lot of our questions. And then we can say, this is something you submitted, this is how we see it's going to work now, and it gives us more something to digest, that's it. I think that's what the board is trying to say in a nutshell, when they're saying that they might need some more information. Am I correct on that, or I bet you don't want to comment, or if I overspoke, please, let me know.
I think that was, I'm Mr. Chairman, I think what Caleb said was, was right on, and I think that's.
You know, so, and does Mr. Brown want to be heard? Did you say he's there on it?
Jeff, do you have anything more to say?
Um, no, I heard you, Mr. Chairman, uh, we will provide the information. I think, uh, the point, um, Dimitri was trying to raise is, we did provide a two thousand seven, it was a snapshot of the parking, and then we color-coded it recently to show what spaces would be his, what spaces would remain with the accounting firm, and what spaces would be with Princeton. So, I think that was just a miscommunication, that there will be designated spaces for the lab.
Okay, well, I think you understand what, what we're requesting, Mr. Brown, am I correct, or?
Yes, I do, I do.
Okay, and I'm probably sure that you, you're happy to hear that I didn't think you needed a traffic study, I'm, I'm sure you might have been happier.
Very happy, yes, thank you.
I mean, I think, you know, um, I don't think it meets the criteria with the numbers, and I think we've been, um, have a lot of traffic studies, you know, I mean, actually, if anybody was most helpful, as you recall, it was Mr. Dirk last time we met.
Absolutely, I am sure, yes.
I'm sure you have a copy of what Mr. Dirk presented to the board.
I'm, I'm well aware of it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay, I mean, you know, because I think, um, he was very helpful, I think, you know, when, after, when we had the last, um, meetings last summer for, for on the adjacent site, and I think that addressed a lot of the traffic as we all know, so. Okay, so.
Yes, agreed.
So I guess the next question would be, um, you, you're going to request it, continue this matter to try to give us more of that feedback? Is that somewhere where we can try to resolve this at this point? Or does, um, you want us to proceed to make a, and make a determination tonight on your site plan and special permit?
Are we asking me, or are we asking the board?
Mr. Brown or you, whoever would like to answer my question? Fine with me.
I mean, if it's possible to make a determination with a contingency that we provide this information, that, I think that would save everybody time, but if, uh, that is not as reasonable, then, uh, I would ask that we continue this at the following meeting, the nearest meeting, because this is something that can be very quickly provided.
All right, let's do that.
So what's the request for the board? Like I say, we're going, we've got a few things coming up. We can either go to August sixteenth or September ninth.
I would prefer August sixteenth.
I think August sixteenth will be fine.
I mean, to the applicant's point, Mr. Chairman, I do feel that if, once we've provided that information, it should not be a lengthy, as lengthy as it was this evening. But assuming that it, assuming, and again, I can't assume, because we don't have anything in front of us, that it doesn't indicate that there's some issues we need to address.
Uh, I, I would want to remind you, to, to make sure that you address if overnight parking is an issue, and also to storm where teams comment if they provide any, so that you don't get delayed if other, other issues are addressed.
Absolutely, thank you.
So there's been a request for the matter to be continued to the next available meeting, which we can go to August sixteenth. This is a request of the board on that matter.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, uh, continue the petition to the August sixteenth meeting.
We have a mush on the floor, do we have a second? I'll second the matter, um, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Lockhart? Is he still with us on Zoom? We have the majority vote, so the matter will be continued to the August sixteenth meeting, good luck, wish you well, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, you're welcome.
I would like to say that I, I believe we've, we've lost Member Lockhart, I don't know if this is temporary that he signed out, or.
At least we have our law for this here, so we have the next, we have plenty to vote on the matter, so. Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter we have is a site plan review and a special permit, one thirty-five, one fifty-three Chelmsford Street. Ryan M. Rourke has applied to the planning board for site plan review per section eleven point four and special permit per section eleven point three one and article twelve point one D to construct a three and a half story mixed-use development, including six residential units and three thousand and sixty-two square feet of commercial space. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is John Geary of the Law Offices of Geary &amp; Geary, LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mr. Ryan Rourke. Also with us tonight is Mark O'Hara, the, of O'Hara Engineering Services, the engineer for the project, and Brenda Machizzi, the, of Machenzi Drafting and Design, the designer for the project. Mr. Rourke is proposing to redevelop, uh, five contiguous lot vacant parcels located at one thirty-five through one fifty-three Chelmsford Street, which he currently has under agreement with the owner, into a three-story mixed-use, mixed-use building consisting of six residential units and, uh, three commercial units on the, on the first floor. Six residential units on floors two and three, and three residential units on the, I'm sorry, three commercial units on the first floor. The layout calls for the three commercials on the first floor ranging in, uh, space from eight hundred and eighty square feet to about eleven hundred and ninety square feet. The second and third floor, uh, plan layouts are identical to, to each other. They each have, uh, one three-bedroom unit and two two-bedroom units. And those units range in size from eight hundred and eighty square feet to about twelve hundred and thirty-eight square feet. The property is located in the NV Zoning District, uh, we have before you tonight seeking a special permit and site plan approval. There are no other approvals required from any other boards for this project. Uh, we have provided the board with a site plan as well as elevation and floor plans, which also shows a rendering of the building. Uh, the redevelopment of this property will result in these five vacant overgrown lots being revitalized into a beautifully designed mixed-use building that, once complete, will provide many benefits, uh, to the neighborhood and the city of Lowell in the form of much-needed market-rate housing, additional tax revenue to the city, and most importantly, a significant investment into this area of Chelmsford Street, which will ultimately enhance the character of this neighborhood. The narrative which I submitted to the, uh, to the staff and the, and the board goes through the criteria for the special permit and articulates how the project meets the criteria in fairly good detail, but I'll go, I'll address, uh, the main points of that at this point as well. So the application to the master plan, so the redevelopment of this property within the neighborhood business district will serve to promote a vibrant mixed-use development by providing high-quality residential housing and neighborhood-scale commercial uses that will serve and enhance the local area. The property is located on the bus road and within a short walk to the Gallagher Transportation Terminal. The proposed residential units are typical and compatible of the kind of residential use that is available throughout the neighborhood. The redevelopment of the property will also complement current and future development along this stretch of Chelmsford Street. Uh, now, as to neighborhood character, the existing lots here have been vacant for decades, as far as I can tell. The lots are overgrown, have collected rubbish over the years, and generally been an eyesore for the neighborhood. Actually, when you're driving down this stretch of Chelmsford Street, it looks like a missing tooth. Uh, the redevelopment of the property will provide the neighborhood with a substantial building, which will be aesthetically pleasing, uh, and compatible to the neighborhood. The six residential units will be of high quality and provide much-needed housing. Although the applicant, applicant does not have anyone lined up for the commercial use, we anticipate and are confident that the users will be in the form of a retail use or other type of neighborhood business, which is, which will support and complement the local neighborhood. The proposed density, design setbacks, height, landscape elements of the proposed project are consistent with the surrounding structures, both residential and commercial, within the neighborhood. Impacts on natural environment, there will be no negative impacts on the natural environment of this project. In fact, the redevelopment of the property will result in a, uh, positive impact to the natural environment. As I said, the current site is overgrown, often used as a dumping site for rubbish, and seems to collect the neighborhood trash when the wind blowing around. Uh, vehicles are also known to park on this site, um, they can access it through the existing curb cut that is on the site. The landscaping that we are proposing will be an enhancement to the neighborhood. Traffic access and safety, so the ingress and egress to and from the property be on both sides of the structure and dimensionally compliant, uh, with the vast majority of the parking located on the north side of the property, on the right side of the building. The, uh, there is adequate parking for both the residential and commercial uses of the property. The applicant is proposing a total of nineteen dimensionally compliant parking spaces. The residential off-street parking requirement for this project requires twelve off-street parking spaces. The applicant expects the commercial uses associated with the redevelopment will likely be that of retail operation or service businesses. A retail operational service business within the neighborhood zoning district requires one off-street parking space per nine hundred square feet. So in this case, we have a total of about thirty-one hundred square feet of commercial space, uh, which would require four off-street parking spaces. Uh, the proposed nineteen parking spaces, which we, which is what we have in total, should suffice to adequately serve the proposed redevelopment of the property. In addition, there probably, there are approximately eight current on-street parking spaces along this stretch of Chelmsford Street in front of the, uh, five parcels, including the existing curb cut. The redevelopment likely reduce that number to five or six on-street parking spaces. Uh, but it would, it would appear from my view of this stretch of Chelmsford Street that the on-street parking is underutilized in this area, for whatever reason. Probably the result of the businesses in this neighborhood being spread out, uh, and the fact that we're directly across the street from the MACON campus, which has its own on-site parking. But ultimately, the, the applicant is providing sufficient parking for the, uh, property. And also, the property being on Chelmsford Street, it allows for easy and adequate access to higher safety and service vehicles. Uh, finally, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to address, uh, the DPD staff comments that were mostly favorable. Uh, there are a few suggestions that the applicant is happy to incorporate into the proposal as well. So the staff pointed out, uh, some lack of detail on the site plan regarding drive lanes and dimensionally, uh, compliant parking spaces. We, our drive lanes aren't dimensionally compliant, and our parking spaces, um, are compliant as well, and, uh, Mark will go through that when he reviews the site plan with the board. Uh, the comments point out that the building is three stories, not three and a half stories, as I mentioned in my narrative. We agree with that analysis, the attic space does not allow for any living space, therefore, it's a three-story building. Uh, the staff suggests that the applicant should take advantage of the Gateway Tree Planting Program through DCR. Revised site plan, which Mark will review with you shortly, proposes that we move the building back five feet off the, off of Chelmsford Street to accommodate the tree planting along Chelmsford Street, so that's a good suggestion, and we're happy to incorporate it. Uh, the staff suggests that the applicant provide onsite bike storage in order to promote bike mobility. The applicant agrees with this, this suggestion, and, uh, Brenda will propose a location for that within the building. Uh, the staff suggests that we designate parking for both residential and the commercial uses. So the applicant is, is happy to do that, and would, would propose that the, uh, right side of the building, where we have fifteen parking spaces, be designated to the residential aspect of the building, and the four parking spaces on the, uh, left side of the building be for the commercial use. Um, the staff, uh, suggests that the board ensure that the first floor space is used for commercial space so that there's no conversion to residential housing at any point in the future. The applicant has no, no plans, no desire to do that, and is happy to go along with that condition. I would also point out that if, uh, if we were to increase the residential. I would also point out that if we were to increase the residential units beyond six, we would need a variance. Ultimately, the project meets the criteria for the issuance of a special permit. It aligns well with the master plan and Sustainable Lowell 2025 Plan. It supports and promotes the character of the neighborhood. It provides a sufficient, significant investment into this stretch of Chelmsford Street to the tune of approximately $2 million, and it provides the city with much-needed housing and tax revenue. So, with all that being said, I would respectfully request that the board issue the special permit and approve the site plan. And at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mark so he can go ahead and review the site plan with the board members. Thank you.
Mr. Counselor, thank you.
Sure. Okay, you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark O'Hara. I'm a civil engineer. My office is located at 21 Mansion Drive in Lowell. I want to thank John for his presentation, and I'm just going to go into some more of the details regarding or relating to engineering. The site is flat, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it does have some slopes to the rear. There will be some retaining walls that are proposed along the rear of the site, but each of these retaining walls will be less than four feet. The site drainage has been designed according to the City of Lowell stormwater standards, and the stormwater will be collected and stored onsite by means of two underground recharge systems. The proposed utilities include connections to existing sewer water, gas, electric, and communications that already exist on Chelmsford Street. The plan shows two areas, or I should say, areas of snow storage on the rear and the sides of the parking areas, with the exception of the areas right up against the building. The parking spaces in the drive aisles meet town's... city standards. The drive aisles are 24 feet wide, as proposed, and the parking spaces are nine by 18. As John had mentioned, we did shift the building back five feet, which was requested during peer review. And we do have a landscaping plan as well that's included in the set that shows our landscaping and lighting layout. I guess, you know, I think John covered a lot of it. I'm here to answer any questions pertaining to engineering, and I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Brenda, would you like to go through the design of the building, please?
Hi, my name is Brenda Machenzi. I hope everybody can hear me. My business is Machenzi Drafting and Design, which I've had for 40 years as a design drafter of residential and small commercial space. I also hold a Massachusetts unrestricted builder's license. The design package here, as was mentioned, has two to three commercial spaces on the first floor and six dwelling units on the second and third floors, four two-bedroom apartments and three... And two three-bedroom apartments, I hope I said that right. On the cover sheet of the package provided, it gives a good overall scope of the drawings and of the project. We have the artistic rendering and the floor plans without all the details... Excuse me, without all the details so that the plans are clear to see the designation of the commercial spaces and the apartment units. There is a separate entrance on the right-hand side of the building for the apartments, which has a lobby, laundry facilities. There's storage closets that we will designate either for bicycles, trash collection, and there's spaces also if an elevator is needed in the building. There is also a second staircase that provides for the second means of egress from the building. So, that's just the overall scope, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer if I can.
Thank you very much. That's it from our end, Mr. Chairman, for now. We're happy to answer any questions that the board members may have. Thank you very much, Mr. Geary. Appreciate it. Okay, at this point in time, I'll turn the matter over to the public. Anybody this evening like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody on Zoom that we have want to speak?
May I have a... May I ask a question?
Sure.
About the landscaping. You noted that the site is currently rather overgrown, and I've noticed walking past it that there's great deal of tree of heaven and other invasive plants there, which I imagine will be cut down in the process of construction, but grow back rather aggressively. Do you have a plan for controlling those going forward?
Mark, are you able to speak to that?
Yeah, the... All of those shrubs and grasses and weeds that you mentioned would be removed from the site. And if it helps out here, I'm going to share my screen and show you the site plan.
I have it up, actually.
Oh, you do? All right, thank you. All right, there it is, right there. Yeah, so as you can see in the site plan, we have the building. We have the parking areas, and we also have where the proposed landscaping is shown. This is not actually the landscaping plan, but we do have one that shows all the proposed species. They're native New England, non-invasive types of plants. I believe we're only removing one tree that's in the front of the site near the property line to the north. But yeah, that would be part of the development, is to remove all of those invasive species.
Michaela, could we just get your last name and address on the record, please, if you don't mind?
Oh, is that to me?
Yes, please.
My name is Michelle Goldberg. I live at 19 Hillside Street.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have any other questions, ma'am?
Um, I... I am concerned that you're underestimating the enthusiasm with which tree of heaven will grow back, but we'll see what happens.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I just heard you said you're concerned about something. I didn't catch the end of it.
So, as I said, one of the invasive species on the site is called... Is tree of heaven. That's probably one of the large trees you're looking at. Very aggressively from any roots that are left in the ground. We're having an argument with it in our yard nearby, as it happens. And as I said, keeping it from coming back is challenging. So, I was wondering what... Are you planning to dig it out? Are you planning to poison it? Are you... Or do we wait and see what happens and deal with it when it comes back?
I will make note of it. Can you provide the name of the species again for me?
What... English is tree of heaven. I don't know the scientific name offhand, but I can look it up for you if that would be... If that's useful.
Yeah, well, not the scientific. If you just have the name.
Tree of heaven.
Tree of heaven.
Um, I'm going to pronounce this very badly. Elanthus altissima is a badly pronounced version of the scientific name.
Okay, no, I'll look into that, and I will make the developer aware of that that species is located on site. We'll identify them, and we'll remove them in whatever the most appropriate methods and effective methods would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of the project? In favor? In favor? Favor? Hearing none at this point. Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this point in time, I'll turn it over to board members for any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Mr. Lockhart, go right ahead.
Have you determined the use for the commercial space? What type of business you're trying to target to move in there?
Mr. Lockhart, we have not determined any tenants at this point in time, but the size of the space would seem to dictate that it would be a neighborhood use or a small retail.
Yeah, okay.
You know, commercial space is much harder to fill than residential space, but, you know, it's not a... It's not a great deal of commercial space, so we're confident...
Right.
The developer is confident he'll be able to fill it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, Mr. Fichette.
To Attorney Geary and your client, I guess you... Thank you for making it pretty easy. I think you agreed, if I was following that correctly, you agreed to every recommendation that was in the DPD memo.
We did.
Yeah, Attorney Geary, just, I guess, one of the clarifications they were looking for... Either way, I think you're going to have to obviously provide a new site plan because it does change the site. But I believe the entire square footage of the building was not provided. There was some question on that?
That's correct, Mr. Fichette. So, we do have a revised elevation floor plans, which show the total of the square footage for the entire building at 10,009.47. So, we will submit revised plans. I believe the site plan that Mark has up is revised, and it shows the drive lanes, the parking space dimensions, and a lot of the information that the staff had commented on.
And is the building... Because you do realize how tough it makes it for the board, because we're seeing this for the first time. Is the...
Yeah, I understand.
Is the building off from the sidewalk five feet?
It is. Mark, can you confirm that?
Yes, we will. We set it back an additional five feet. It was essentially right on the lot line initially.
Yeah. And then, is there any kind of a landscaping plan that was provided relative to this change, or...
I'm not sure if this is coming up, but we revised the landscaping plan to show some additional shrubs, plants in the front.
Again, you realize we're seeing this for the first time.
Yes, understood. There wasn't enough time to revise it and get it into your hands, so...
I understand.
We figured we'd show it to you here tonight and go from there.
Yeah, no, and again, I appreciate you understanding what the intent was with DPD on this... On this opportunity. Because where it is a vacant lot, it's a good opportunity to kind of implement some of the streetscape enhancements we'd like to see, so appreciate that. All right, I honestly, Mr. Chairman, I... Does that affect... Could you just go over... Does that affect the snow storage at all? Because I know the elevation in the back, where that really ramps up right behind the parking, and I know that was designated as snow storage. If you could go over that a little bit. I was concerned with the initial plan on that.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's really hard to see the snow storage. I don't... For some reason, it's not being identified. I don't know if you can see where they... It's very, very, very light, but we have snow storage on the southern side.
Yeah, that looks fine, yeah.
This area over here, there's some additional room for snow storage. And as we go to the other side, it is steep back here. We're proposing retaining wall with some more snow storage available in these areas and also along the abutting property line.
Yeah, it's going to be tight. It looks like a great place to sled in the back of that. Yeah, okay. Did you do any kind of a calculation based on the square footage of the parking and what you have? It's just a small spot for a snow storage. I'm just curious.
I didn't provide a calculation, but, you know, in a typical New England winter, there would be... I would believe there would be sufficient. But, you know, we've been getting some crazy winters. We had one about six years ago where we got 100 and something inches of snow. And, you know, what we would propose doing, I believe, is removing the snow from the site whenever it got to a capacity that would warrant it.
Sure.
Which was, you know, I did see that a lot happening during that crazy year.
Right, right, right. And I guess, from the architectural perspective, I'll certainly defer to Sinead's comments as well on that, but I like the design of the building. I think visually it's pleasing. And I think... I honestly do think it's going to enhance that area. Having that as a vacant lot really is a detriment to that site. So, I really do think that's going to help. My hat's off to the engineer, the woman that was talking about apparently an invasive type of plant. I couldn't quite understand what was going on, but it seems like you understand what the request was there, Mark. Is that correct? So, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly, what was happening.
Yes, and I appreciate that, you know, what she had offered about the invasive species. I'm not an expert in invasive species, but we would like to have it removed in the appropriate manner.
Okay, all right. I guess the only... I'll defer to the fellow board members whether or not we want to see a revised plan or whether or not we want to make it conditional. But I will leave that to the... As other board members speak. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. Fichette. Thank you. Any other board members? Sinead?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions. I was curious what... It looks like there's maybe three distinct materials on the building facade shown in the rendering, so I was just curious if the applicant could speak to what those materials are.
Brenda, could you speak to that?
Yes. I don't know if it's been fully decided as far as the materials go, but we're just looking at the siding with the trim. Whatever type of siding is decided to use, it's just painted in two colors. And the bottom... The bottom commercial area, to be honest, I'm not 100% sure, but again, it's just a siding with a different color. So, while it looks like three different materials, I don't believe it is.
Okay, so on the street level, it would also be kind of a wood siding, just maybe a different color? Is that right?
Yes, that's a proposal right now. The rendering is just preliminary for artistic purposes, but that's the basics of the style.
And is there lighting provided on the... Along the sidewalk and in the parking lot? So, I didn't... I don't think I saw any lighting on the plans.
Yeah, I can answer that. We're just proposing building lighting from the structure itself, downward broadcasting. There are streetlights in the street. I'm not sure if they're on this side of the road. I could check. I believe they're on the opposite side of the road, but they do provide some light in... Onto the street. But we're not proposing any freestanding lighting.
Yeah, I think some building lighting along where the sidewalk is would increase the safety in that area. And I just overall wanted to say that I was... I'm in support of this application. I think that it'll be... It'll benefit the site to develop it in this way, and I was happy to hear that the applicant was amenable to the changes that the staff proposed in regards to bike parking and also increased green space on the site. So, I just wanted to say thank you for addressing those tonight. That's all. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Russell, any questions or comments?
Yeah, one question. Thank you, Chairman. Kind of more of a point of clarification. Member Lockhart brought this up. Will the applicant have to come back before this board if that commercial space is changed to residential in the future? I don't know if maybe staff or another member of the board can answer that.
I believe they would because that would be extending it, and they would require another site plan review.
Okay, all right. Thank you. In that case, I am also... So, I walk by the site almost every day, actually. I've been very curious as to what's coming before the board. So, I am generally very much in favor of this application. I think it's a great infill development. And I appreciate the applicant making the changes that the DPD requested as well as adding additional street trees and landscaping. And I agree with Member Gallivan's comments about additional... A little additional lighting, street lighting would be beneficial and would improve the area in general. But that is all for my comments. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Caleb?
I do have a comment about the architecture design. Again, bringing my amateur architecture hat right now. I see the awning being, you know, on different levels, and I have a little issue with that, because I feel like, you know, the awning kind of signifies commercial, and then the frontage, then this go up to the second floor. So, I'm just wondering the reason for it, or maybe just a preliminary design. And I would suggest, like, even if there is no awning on the first floor, and then the second floor, ideally because of the sun or something, use a kind of a little different awning type of design, maybe with like, instead of the whole, the big, like, fabric ones, use like, some of the wood structure kind of like, sun shade or something. So, to kind of differentiate the two different units, so that it doesn't... It kind of, I guess, differentiate the different, the mixed units. And also, like, just not the awkwardness of like, oh, the awning just climb a floor and, you know, over a corner. So, that's a comment on that. And then, secondly, I just want to maybe... I'll ask Member Fichette whether, you know, we feel like the trees, their tree situation is adequate. I mean, seems like MASTY, DCR do have some comments to... To, I would say, encourages more trees. So, I mean, if there could be a few more trees, I guess, like, on the, like, plant... To be planted, that would be good for the site as well. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Attorney Gary, when we were going through the letter from staff, you might have covered it, but I might have missed it, but it was one comment about the A and R plan. I take it you agree to that, because obviously without the A and R...
Right. You're correct.
The A and R plan doesn't go anywhere.
Right, I did not cover that, actually. But, of course, we'll be happy to submit the A and R plan once we're approved and ready to go.
Yeah, because if you own the A and R plan, the whole site's gone, right?
Right.
Okay. Because you have five separate lots now, so to be able to put them continuing...
Five sep... Right, five separate lots. They're in common ownership. They've, you know, merged for zoning purposes, but we will provide a, an A and R plan.
I have no further questions. Any other board have any follow-up?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a couple of things. They are before us for site plan review in special permit.
Correct, both, yeah. So, we need two votes.
And, you know, we did, honestly, I think, and Sinead had commented, because it is visually pleasing with what appears to be three different types of material. And I guess, and that still sounds like it's almost conceptual in some respects, based on the response that we received.
I think it was preliminary is the word they used.
Yeah.
Whatever that means.
First in the stage of development.
Yeah, that means that as soon as we approve it, they change it.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about.
I guess.
So, and not, and I mean, I just... And I, what I'm just meaning, from a perspective of, it was great what was presented tonight, in the sense that you're willing to make the revisions to the plan. But also, when we approve special permit, the whole idea is for the board to have a little bit more latitude in addressing the architectural detail and how that's going to sit on the site. And even the landscaping plan, we just saw that for the first time tonight. I know many times, if we're crafting, and we've been working on it, and the plan is submitted, and it still needs to be fine tuned, we can condition it upon staff, you know, final approval, and if there's any issues. But, boy, I hate to, you know, we've been continuing everything tonight, but it almost sounds like it'd be nice to have a plan showing us, you know, the, just what we were looking at for the first time, but in detail, so we can look at that, the landscaping plan. I do think the idea, that's why I was a little taken back by putting it back, and I understand there was some real difficulty with putting some trees in that space. I know some builders, they've had problems. And you got utilities going into the building, and there's not a lot of space there, so I get that. But perhaps look at that site a little differently, where the parking area is, obviously not to block sightlines. I knew, it looks like you did have some trees there. To Sinead's point, if there could be, a lighting plan should be submitted, so we should see a lighting plan that could possibly really enhance the building and the site. So, again, hats off to what you've submitted, and what you're willing to, how you're willing to amend the plan. But I'd like to see a plan that memorializes a little bit more the actual, how that building is going to finally look, and then how this is going to sit on the site with a, maybe a more robust... I don't want to say robust, let's just take a look at that landscaping plan. We didn't have a chance to really look at it here this evening as a board, so... Counsel, if you'd be amenable of that. I think, just unfortunate, I'll let the chairman poke me in the ribs here. We seem to continue everything from the August meeting, but that would be my thoughts. I don't know what the other board members feel about that.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you guys know that we do have, with the continuation of 1110 Westwood Street, we have three projects on the agenda for the 16th. I know that that's generally around how much we like to fill it. I don't know if we'd like to continue this to August as well. I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that.
Thank you. Let's hear from Attorney Gary, if he would.
So, from the developer's perspective, I understand what you're saying. So, it sounds like you're looking for more detail on the lighting plan, the landscape plan, and some more detail on the exterior architectural aspect of the building. And I understand all that. I guess, from the developer's perspective, pushing this off to the September meeting makes it tough to meet any type of, you know, getting the ground before the winter weather comes around. So, it delays the, it delays the development of the lot. It's not the end of the world, but if there's any way we can condition this on, you know, working with DPD to finalize those three plans, you know, that would be our preference, but we'll defer it to the board.
Mr. Chairman, my thoughts would be, several of the items we did continue, I think, are gonna be fairly quick when they're coming through the board. I mean, I'm not necessarily too adverse to putting this on the agenda, but again, that's yours, the chairman must understand that.
Attorney Gary, would you be able to have the architectural plans? I mean, something that they give us definitive and just instead of preliminary?
I believe so. Brenda, can you turn that around for the... What's the meeting date? Is it August 16th?
No, we can either go August 16th or September 9th.
Right. We would prefer the 16th, Brenda.
Yeah, can I, can I ask what more? I might want to clarify my answer on the materials as to, it's either like a vinyl siding or a hardy board siding. Those things haven't been determined yet. But I don't know if there's, what more that you wanted to see on the plans for that.
Well, I guess, from my perspective, and I guess, anybody can chime in, but what was presented, you know, at the street level has a different color and feel. Then you get up to the next level, residential, and it has a different color, looks like different texture. Whatever, if you could finalize that, it's gonna be all one look, one color, is it gonna be different texture? Is it gonna... So, the board would approve under the special permit, really what that's going to look like, because, again, a building that size, it's a walkable neighborhood. We see this in other areas. You have, the storefronts have a different, maybe sometimes a little bit more of a traditional look, and then you, you know, you can deviate a little bit when you get to the other stories. But I think from, that would be, again, as I'm looking at this, I wouldn't want to approve this and then, especially under the special permit, and then have it be a completely different application, all, you know, all on color, all one texture. And yet, what was pleasing was the different texture and the different colors here.
That is the intent. The intent is the different textures and colors. It's just a matter of what the materials would be chosen.
Sinead, do you want to comment further on the architectural? Any questions you have on that? I mean, what you would, I mean, because when we hear, like, as Jerry says, preliminarily, and then we look at the site, then we go up and see it later and say, wow, that's not, that's not what we saw, you know? So, basically, like to have a little more idea, you know, I mean, what it's gonna look like, bottom line.
Right.
Sinead, go ahead, if you would.
Yeah, I would, I would, if we are continuing it to August or to September, if it was just maybe written out on the elevations. I think the drawn elevations are also a little bit different than the rendering. So, getting that clarity between the rendering itself and the elevations would be great. I also agree with Caleb's comment that maybe bringing the awning down from that second level to the first level, because I think awnings often act, or double as signage, and maybe could have a lighting component, too. So, I think that if you could kind of bring together the material selection, some of the comments that Caleb made with the lighting and the landscape would be really great to see at our next meeting. And being a little bit more clear on the drawing itself of what those material selections are and what the detailing is would be great, because I think right now, it's scaled pretty nicely. And so, I just want to make sure that scale carries over to the final, the final building.
Does that answer the questions on what the board's looking for? And we got to the architectural?
I believe it does, yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah.
And Brenda, would you be able to turn that around for the 16th, get a week before the 16th, say?
That's the loaded question.
It'd have to be in time for the planning staff and everybody to take a look at it, and all the other board members. If not, I guess the next one's...
As far... I'm sorry, can I say as far as preliminary, too, is... It's really just a matter of a couple, add in a couple of notes to the drawing and probably move in the awnings. That, what would the date need to be done?
We could either do the 16th, which we're kind of filled up on right now, because basically, they don't like us staying here too late at night, because they've been trying to throw us out in the past. And, or the other one, the next meeting following that, September 9th.
And if the date is the 16th, you need it submitted at what date?
Planning staff, what's the deadline for that?
It would be, let me just...
Usually like, 10 to 12, almost 10 to two weeks early?
Yeah, so, actually, the deadline for the 16th is this, the 19th, so I think that's this Friday.
It's when?
It's the 19th of July would be the deadline for the 16th of August, is what our spreadsheet over here says.
So, you're basically coming up on the deadline now.
Wait, I'm sorry, the deadline is when?
Today.
Yeah. That's what I thought you said.
You said July 19th. I'm looking at my watch. I have a calendar on you. So, I think it's the 19th.
So, if it's just, if they're not like redoing the whole application, they can send in like the architectural renderings like a week in advance?
Yeah.
Just as long as there's enough time for Dylan, who's the staff member on this project, to go over them.
I think by August 2nd would be the latest you can probably submit it, if we're gonna act on it by the 16th. But then it has to go up to all the other department heads and get the feedback back to us again.
Yeah. Yeah, I can take care of that.
So, basically, you need those new set of plans in here by August 2nd, which gives you basically two weeks...
Mr. Chair, one more comment, please.
Yeah, who's speaking? I don't know.
Hello?
Yes.
I think we need to provide for bicycle storage somewhere outside where it's visible.
Okay.
And include that on plan as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lockhart.
Does it matter to the board whether the bicycle storage is outside or inside? I would think that inside is more secure.
I think, you know, this come up in other projects. I think the more visible it is, the more it'll get used.
Yeah, I agree, but I guess my way of thinking, I imagine that most of the bicycle uses will be for the occupants of the residential units, but I suppose it could be for the commercial, whatever the commercial use ends up being. So, either way is fine.
I believe... Can you do some inside, and then maybe one or two outside then?
Okay.
If you look at, I mean, this is yesterday, Mr. Gary. If you feel, you know, the residents might be using it, if you had some storage there, then maybe one or two outside for commercial, just a thought.
Sure, we'll propose something.
Think of that, Caleb?
Yeah, I just wanted to clear, you know, to point out that's the staff comment, is that inside for residents and outside for customers.
Okay.
And then, I also want to reach, if you don't mind me interrupting, I want to, want to ask the architect to include the lighting fixtures on the rendering, if possible. I think that will help, like, you know, telling us more about how it's gonna look.
Yeah, so Caleb's asking if we can show us what type of lighting fixtures would be on the building for the lighting, so we could see how that blends in with the architectural plan.
Thank you.
I mean, I think, in that way, I mean, I know a lot of the stuff that staff came out, that you had missing, you know, that way, you can end up putting in, you know, the other stuff that had to be in, like the square footage and a couple of other things on the new set of plan, that if it came in.
Understood.
Okay. So, if you think you can have it done by the 16th, I guess we could comply for the 16th. I guess then we'll have to close out the meeting for the 16th.
Yeah, that would do it.
I believe we can resubmit for the 16th.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so there's a request to continue the matter to the 16th. What's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to continue the petition to the August 16th planning board meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. This matter will be continued to the end. Yeah, so if you want to update those, Attorney Gary, any other suggestions that the planning staff requested, maybe you can put those on a new set of plans as well.
We'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on, along on the agenda, the next matter we have is a preliminary subdivision approval for 111 River Cliff Road. We have Bushbaum Passport has applied. approval for 111 River Cliff Road, we have Bushbaum Passport has applied on behalf of Catherine and Robert Kant Crowe to the planning board for preliminary subdivision approval per, per the city subdivision land use regulation, this property is in suburban, single-family zoning district, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and, uh, board members, my name is Hushman Rafshar from Taj Engineering LLC, uh, my office is here in Lowell, um, the, I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Kankor, uh, who own and reside at what eleven, 111 River, River Cliff Road, um, the, um, the parcel itself is, um, over three point five acres, and the owner and the applicant is planning to subdivide and create a lot, a, uh, house lot at the, uh, southeastern corner of their property, uh, this property has a very unique access, because the road, the River Cliff Road, uh, is public right up to its intersection, um, with, uh, Gina Lane, at that location, across River Cliff Road, there's a gate, and then River, River Cliff Road becomes a, a private road, actually, all the way to the end, where the frontage of the proposed lot is, so the lot, the existing mother parcel is divided now into, is proposed to be divided into Lot A and Lot B, Lot A will be three points, a little over three acres, and Lot B, the new lot, will be over two, twenty-three thousand a square foot, um, well over half an acre, the, we have been, um, working actually and in consultation and coordination with DPD and fire department and other departments, uh, at the city hall, um, as you can see on the plan which is submitted, the movement and maneuvering of the fire ladder has been shown, and there are two options, option one, option two, whether the, um, ladder, fire ladder has to go to Lot A or Lot B, the general topography and the drainage pattern of the site, as a result of the new creation of new lot, is not going to change at all, it remains as it is, a sloping, in, in, in general, a direction of, uh, northwesterly direction, towards the back of the lot, the utilities are right at this, right itself in the vicinity, and all the connections will be made to the new house, um, and, other than that, uh, we are proposing a underground leaching chamber right on the property, uh, on Lot B, for the sake of the, the driveway and the roof, as the small area, impervious area that, that is created, just as a additional measure to mitigate, uh, the surface runoff, um, this plan, the, uh, movement of the fire truck, fire ladder, has been actually, um, reviewed and approved by the, uh, fire department, the deputy chief, um, for fire prevention, um, after we made our submission and application to, uh, DPD for this, uh, preliminary subdivision approval, um, we were told that since in this, uh, zoning district, uh, SSF, suburban, single-family district, there are only few lots which are over twenty thousand a square foot, so, per section five dot two dot nine of the city of Lowell zoning bylaws, we could go ahead and apply for a special permit for the reduction of the frontage, at that time, we have already made the submission for preliminary subdivision review, and it was not enough time, we, uh, we draw our application, uh, from zoning board for the, um, uh, reduction in the frontage of the new lot and creating that, what I call paper cul-de-sac, however, we did inform the EP, we would like to redraw that application and go ahead and apply for the, uh, a special permit per the section five dot two dot nine, for the reduction of the frontage for the new lot, which will be basically, uh, the property line, if you may, the right away at the end of the River Cliff Road, which is, uh, over forty feet. I was told today that, uh, our special permit, uh, application will be, um, uh, submitted and reviewed at the next planning board meeting of August sixteen, I believe, uh, so, but we thought at any rate, we will come tonight before you for, um, the preliminary subdivision approval request, with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Did you receive the comment sheet from the planning staff today, that was dated back on, uh, August eighth?
Yes, oh, uh, from, uh, DPD?
Yeah, did you see the, the comment that was provided to us and yourself as well? From July eighth?
I am sure it has gone to me, I'm trying to remember, what were the comments?
There's your name on it, it was sent out from Jess Wilson, my staff?
Yes, yes, you haven't seen that, yes.
So on page two, subdivision design standards, street, the dimensions of the existing River Cliff Road, which was a private way, and the proposed by tubular driveway extensions are not provided, so DPD staff is unable to confirm the compliance with design standards as set forth per the section of the subdivision control law, so our function is to approve whether this is a preliminary subdivision, if it meets the criteria, well, the preliminary subdivision, um, under our criteria for the subdivision control, I mean, in general, from the preliminary plan, you need the arrangements of the streets, the alley lots, the layouts of utility and so forth, locations, names, the masons, dimensions of the streets, public private ways, um, location, proposed names, dimension of all proposed streets, and other ways of areas for the public use, so with the comment that staff gave us, it appears that that would not meet the criteria for the approval of the preliminary subdivision plan.
But we have shown that, Mr. Chairman, we have shown the utilities, we have shown the utility connections, the name of the road.
So can you address the comment that staff had, is what I'm asking, the, the dimensions of this River Cliff Road, and extensions are not provided, the dimensions of the road? You have the dimensions of the road?
Yes, we have, we have shown it, yes.
This is what's, okay?
We, we extended the existing road, just.
You need, you know what the dimensions of the road are?
It's not on here, sir.
Staff says you didn't put them down.
Twenty-two feet wide road.
Huh?
Twenty-two feet wide road, which is same as existing.
Planning board.
You need to run the plan.
My building's on, on the case.
Okay, I mean, we have to decide whether this meets the approval of a preliminary plan for subdivision, and it, so, the staff is telling us that it doesn't have the dimensions of the road, which our preliminary plan says you have to have the dimensions of the road for us to approve a preliminary plan, so you asked us to approve a preliminary plan without the requirements of the preliminary plan.
On sheet four of five, and actually on all the sheets, we have hatched out, okay, the, there are two different shades.
Four, five, yeah. Yeah, so.
Three of five, any, any of them, three, let's look at the.
Yeah, I got it, right here, right here, yeah, and I'm still looking for the dimensions of the road, and I don't see it.
Well, the, we showed the addition, the extension and widening of the, extending the existing roadway in the private section, so li- lighter?
You have to show us the dimensions of the road.
Okay. It's shown, it, we just have to add the number, yes, that's correct.
So without those?
Yes, it's twenty, twenty-two feet wide.
For our regulations, we can't approve the plan, because they're not on the plan, so you asked us to approve a preliminary plan that doesn't meet the criteria of the subdivision control law, because they have to be on the plan, because alls we do is either approve or deny the preliminary plan, so one of the criterias is, which I just read, is the arrangement of all the streets and the roads, and staff has indicated to you and all of us, back on July eighth, that you didn't meet the dimensions of the road, so therefore it doesn't meet the requirements of the preliminary plan, so we're here to vote whether it meets the approval of the preliminary plan, so those are just my comments.
Yeah, graphically it is shown, but the, that the width of the road is not labeled, it has been, that's what I'm saying.
So it's deficient, yeah, okay, anything else you'd like to add?
But the other dimensions, the setbacks and, uh, the meets and bounds of the new lot, and I think.
I understand what the new lots are, but with subdivision control, we're looking at the road, that's, that's what, they're all says here, we gotta look at the road, the road, the road, the road, says it in three different places, location, names, dimensions of the adjacent streets and other public private ways, goes on and says, arrangement of the streets, alleys and lots, and layout of the utility lines, and it goes on again, location, proposed names and dimensions of all proposed streets and other ways of public use, a reason severe to concern, and it goes on and says, the preliminary plan shall not be deemed to have been submitted to the board until all information listed above under A two, and that falls under A two, have been fully completed in accordance with the regulations delivered to the planning board.
We added actually a cross-section of the road today.
I, I hear you.
When I read, and I, we sent it in actually, but it was today, you know, I, I saw those comments.
But you're not showing us the dimensions of River Cliff Road, right? Not on plans, I see, you said on sheet four or five, I get sheet four or five, yeah, they're not labeled, but it's up to you, you're the one that submitted the plan.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe, I believe if I remember, uh, speaking with Jess earlier, the applicant, what he has right now are new plans that were only submitted to the city today, so they were not.
Those don't count, right?
Right.
Whatever plans you have that come in today, sir, they don't count.
Okay.
Because they, they didn't meet the deadline for tonight's meeting, so whatever you have today, we can only go by what you submitted to us, we go out and study these plans, we go out and, I've been out to the site, I know the site well, I've been in houses, the Bolins' house, I've been in the Curtis' house, I've been, I know the neighborhood well, this is probably within a very short walk, very, very short walk from my house, so I know the neighborhood well, but I'm just saying for a preliminary plan, if you're bringing a new plan tonight that we haven't seen, you haven't met the deadline, you haven't put the stuff forward, so, that's, those are just my comments, I'm sure we'll hear from other board members, but, while I'm concerned, it hasn't met the definition of a preliminary plan, but.
I apologize for missing that one dimension of the width of the road.
I mean, you know, you're bringing a new plan today, it doesn't do us any good, but we haven't seen it, we can't approve it, uh, there's a deadline, we have a deadline for a reason, um, you know, you can draw us up and then come in tonight, but we haven't seen any of that, so, but, um, anybody else want to be heard, uh, speak in regards to the, uh, preliminary plan for subdivision, anybody else is steaming, anybody here, or anybody on Zoom, we have anybody on Zoom, no? Okay, okay, so anybody like to speak in favor, in favor, in favor, hearing none, anybody like to speak in opposition, in opposition, in opposition, hearing none, at this time, any other board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, just, I guess for clarification, so the applicant, you were going forward with the subdivision, uh, application, but then you were going to actually apply for the special permit, I, I'm just trying to understand what was from staff, if, if I could get some clarification from staff here, please?
So I, I think when, um, Jessica had originally looked at the application, they had applied for site plan, I mean, um, preliminary subdivision, uh, review here and were applying to the ZBA for the variance on the frontage, but then something was found in the zoning code, um, that said that they could get a special permit regarding the frontage from the planning board, so the applicant preferred to keep the application just before one board, as opposed to going before two bodies.
So I think what it was is, on our last sheet here, they showed the, which choices they could go, um, where they indicated to the applicant, that, you know, he could either go before the ZBA or come before the planning board for the special permit, and I believe from communication today that he would like to come back for the planning board for the, uh, reduction of frontage to get the special permit from the planning board, however, um, that would be something in the future, but they'd still need to have the subdivision to get to the, to get to Lot B to begin with, so without the subdivision, you don't even get to Lot B.
Right.
So, so what's before us tonight is just act, whether we think that the, you meant the preliminary findings for the, for the preliminary subdivision, is the only thing that's in front of us this evening.
So I guess, Mr. Chairman, we've had a rash of that this evening, where we've had, revisions, the plans come before us tonight, so, um, from a technical perspective, it, what was, uh, submitted does not meet the technical requirement, um, so from that perspective, I would not act on what was presented, and I mean, if it's the wish of the board, we could deny what was presented from a technical perspective, uh, but certainly I, I don't think we would, I would feel comfortable voting on it this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vashet, any other board members, comments?
Vote.
Chairman, if I may, um, I, I don't think I would feel comfortable as well, I, I would just like to draw the applicant's attention to the memo that DPD issued, um, there are a couple other items that were brought up as well, um, showing that, um, that they identified a few large trees weren't, which weren't accurately represented on the site plan, we would like to see where those are located right now and whether or not they're gonna be removed.
Great.
And I think, I think that's it, I think that was the main point on my end, thank you.
Thank you, Russell, anybody else?
And Chairman, I, I also think that, like, um, the, the application needed to be complete, um, and, and it's not like, uh, you know, it, it's okay that you missed something, but it's just, that means you're not ready for the board's, um, consideration, so we knew, uh, go through the, the procedure carefully and just make sure you got everything down so that you, we're not hung up on it next time, so, uh, you know, go through the, the zoning ordinance and, and also there's, uh, when this one will be subdivision regulations to make sure. this one will be subdivision regulations to make sure your plan, your application comply with all the requirements. And hopefully next time we will be able to, uh, act on it. And then also, um, I, I just have some question about like, maybe to start with to the board or throw it out there about like, being a private street, like, how come, how the CUDAC design, you know, dictate, and, and also of course, being a private street will be, I, I'm guessing this will be under HOA kind of or some type of easement, or I just want to understand that, that like nature of how this street is, um, maintained. And also like, uh, in that extent of how do we, what, what is a good design for the, that CUDAC and, uh, with the possibility of the paper street in the future might, might, you know, enter it and an odd angle, so I was planning to, to discuss, discuss on that, um, if the plan were ready, but in this case, we'll have to wait for next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Mr. Lockhart, you still with us, you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm still with you. Just one more thing on that, the, uh, uh, stormwater management, the status of that, of this memo from July 8th, if you ask that question, we want to make sure that we get that in. That's all.
Thank you, Vijay. Okay. The. Do you have any comments, huh? No?
No, thank you.
So basically, sir, what we have is, we have the preliminary, preliminary plan in front of us, which doesn't seem to meet the criteria.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, I think Dylan was in the stormwater meeting, he can, he can speak to.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I think Dylan was in the stormwater meeting regarding this project. Um, I know there was just a question about that, he may be able to speak to that, um, if he wanted to.
Stormwater said they did not have any requirements for the site.
Oh, you said what?
Stormwater said there were no requirements for the site and the leaching chamber was not necessary.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So basically, if you want, sir, you can either have us act on the plan tonight, um, it sounds like, I'm at least myself, I'm not in agreement that it meets the preliminary plan, um, so we can vote on that and you can see what happens on that, or if you want, you could ask to withdraw the plan at this time and come back with another set of plans on a future date and, um, put the criteria in for what we need for the dimensions of River Cliff Road and the other matters. So what are you requesting?
So your, your, uh, uh, issue is only the width of the road not shown on the plan?
Right. It's, yeah, it's right near the criteria, we have to have it to approve the preliminary plan, without it, we can't approve it. So.
Even though it is graphically shown?
It has to be shown on the plan, yes.
No, graphically it is shown, but the, the, the number, the width of the road is, is missing. But graphically, the expansion of the pavement is shown.
You have to have the dimensions of the road on the plan, which are not on the plan.
Okay.
So it doesn't meet the preliminary requirements for preliminary plan.
Besides that.
So if we vote today, the chances are, at least I'm gonna vote no on your preliminary plan. Okay? We can do that tonight if you want us to. Okay? Or you can ask us to withdraw the plan, come back at a future date with the dimensions on the road and other comments that staff has requested. It's up to you. We can do it either way. So if it doesn't meet the criteria, we just don't ignore it and vote for it. So you have the comments, tell you need them on the plan. If you have new plans, we haven't seen them, they're no good to us tonight. If you have them on the new plan, you can submit them at a future date and come back if you want us, if you want to withdraw the plan at this time, then we wouldn't act on it and you can come back in. If you want us to act on it, then we'll vote on time. The other board members may approve it, it's up to them. But, so you have two choices. You want us to vote on the plan tonight?
Because.
It's up to you.
You have to go, still you have to go for definitive subdivision plan approval anyway.
I don't know, they might not, the other board members might not agree with me, I'm just telling you, I'm not voting for it, but the other board members may say yes. Obviously, it's a majority vote, you just need to be out of five. It's up to you. Your plan, your call. So what would you like to do?
Since there is only one dimension of the road, the number is missing, can we approve the preliminary so, and, and, and we take care of everything else at definitive, just in the interest of time?
We either vote on this tonight, whatever you like, okay? If it meets, we, we either decide if it meets the criteria or if it doesn't. Okay?
Chairman, may I chime in real fast? Just, I, I think, like, dimensions means a number. I mean, everything can be sold on a scale map, and at that scale, you can say it's twenty-four and a half feet instead of twenty-five feet, or, you know, a dimension state on a plan, because we, in my opinion, when, when a planning board approves something, you know, whatever is on the plan becomes the record, you go to the register of these and record that, so if that's missing, and if that's the requirement, it's not like, oh, I, then I condition you to add back afterwards because, um, the regulation says that you need the dimension there, so, I mean, it's the number, but it's a number that is not on the plan right now.
That's it, for all practical purposes, this is not an interstate highway or a collector road, it's just a glorified driveway.
Okay. We'll make our decision then, okay? We'll vote, okay? Anything else you'd like to add? Okay?
Can I ask for continuation?
I'm sorry, you want, ask for what? What are you asking for?
To continue.
Continue it? No. You can submit a new plan, the plan's insufficient. I said you can withdraw it if you want, are you gonna ask to withdraw it, or you can ask for us to vote? Whatever you like.
So the choices are either withdraw or?
Yeah, and then come back with, come back with a plan that meets the criteria. We have to decide whether you meet the, you know, we, we don't put a, we do not put conditions on a preliminary plan. It either meets the criteria or it does not. So we either vote yes it does or no we don't. If you want us to vote, we'll vote. Or if you, say you have another set of plans, if you want to withdraw these plans, come back with a new set of plans in the future, then we'll give the new set of plans consideration in the future, if the board allows you to withdraw. If you say you already have new plans, you can say I'll withdraw it, now come back and request a new date and a new set of plans with what's requested to meet the preliminary subdivision requirements. It's up to you, sir. Your decision, we'll, we'll vote either way.
We have already submitted new plans, so they will send it to you then, I guess.
So.
We submitted new plans.
Today.
Today.
And when did you want those plans heard? Today? So the new plans you gave today to them, that hasn't made their way to us, you want us to act on tonight?
No.
Something that we have not seen.
I understand. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So again, are you requesting to withdraw your preliminary plan, are you asking us to vote on it? You have two choices. If you want, we'll vote, we're ready to vote.
Okay, so when I withdraw, I have to resubmit? That's what you're saying, right?
That's up to you.
Yeah.
You can submit them to meet the requirements that you need. I don't know what your new plans look like, I don't know if, if you addressed the issues that planning staff asked you to do back on July 8th. If they're not there and you submit them, we're gonna be in the same boat and you come back. Okay? So I suggest if they give you comments, you should pay attention to their comments. They're trying to tell you nicely that it didn't meet the criteria. That's what it says. And that's what a preliminary plan, we usually say it meets the criteria, it doesn't meet the criteria. We don't condition a preliminary subdivision, we're not allowed to. We have to say, yes, it meets the criteria, or no, it does not. Planning staff says it doesn't, I agree with planning staff. The other board members may feel differently. They might not agree with planning staff, or me. It's up to you. That's why I say we can vote either to accept your preliminary plan or deny your preliminary plan tonight, or if you want to withdraw it, come back with a new preliminary that, plan and a future date, it's totally up to you.
So if you vote and reject, what will happen?
If we vote what?
If you, if you vote and, and, you know, the result is negative, what will happen?
If we vote, what happens?
Yes.
Well, it all depends. If we approve it, you come back for definitive subdivision plan. If we deny it, then you have to go back in the future with a new preliminary subdivision plan. If we vote for it, you come back with a definitive subdivision plan. If we vote against it, you have to come back with another preliminary subdivision plan.
Okay, so what is the difference between your, the other, what is, what is the difference between the two options? I mean, at the end of the day?
It's up to you. Do you want us to vote on the plan? Yes or no? This is what you gave us, do you want us to vote on this? Do you want us to decide whether this meets the preliminary subdivision control regulation as requested by the city of law?
So if you don't vote, my application remains open till I, till I submit new plans, right?
No, doesn't just stay open, we don't leave things just hanging in the air, no. No. We'll vote, one way or another, tonight, we're voting. We either, we can either vote on your plan as you submitted to decide whether it meets the preliminary criteria or not. And I suggested an alternative was whether you want to pull your plan back and give us new plans in the future. It's up to you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I have a question, if we vote and if we vote no, is there a number of days that the applicant has to wait before he can resubmit a new plan?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure if that's a question for staff or?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know, because I, if you notice, our zoning book goes back to 2009 when we had updated. I know on other matters, it's a two-year period on the, but it's since it's, and I think the difference here is between the definitive plan and the preliminary plan. Oh, that's preliminary. Definitive. Let me get back here. I don't think it mentions it under the preliminary that I can see. You, Jerry?
No, I don't see anything referencing that.
No.
It just talks about the amount of time for rendering a decision, but doesn't talk about, uh, nine.
So. The member was asking if, if we voted against it, do we value for a certain period of time from coming back? And it doesn't say our regulations when you come back. That's why I tried to give you the alternative, whether you want to withdraw it and therefore there's no timetable, so you can just do a new set of plans and come back, request to come back at a future date. But I said in the alternative, you have the right to have us act on the plan tonight. We can either vote for it or against it. And if we vote for it.
Well, that's my question, I don't see any, any difference at the end result, either or, I mean.
That's up to you then, if you don't see the difference.
How practical are we here?
Okay.
I will resubmit, uh, plans, I have no problem, but, uh, I don't understand the.
Well.
I will.
Okay.
I mean, the only thing, the only, the only item was missing, which was the layer was frozen in the, in the, in the software, is the width of the road. We added a cross-section and sent it this, this, this today.
Which is past the due date of the plans that were required to be before us for the public hearing.
For that one number?
So you missed a date, you missed a date, so you can't make it up now. Okay, the date's coming on.
That's okay.
It's like if you, you know, your plane was due this morning at eight o'clock and you showed up today at 12, they're not gonna put you on the plane. Gone, time's up.
No, I understand, I understand.
So the plan no good.
But the deal is not over yet, I have to come back to you for the definitive subdivision plan.
If you get approval on the preliminary, which you haven't yet.
So for the sake of one number, graphic, graphics are shown, don't, they don't lie, the, the plans are drawn to the scale. For the sake of one number, you want me to, you, and, and, and it has to come to you again for the final approval. I'm requesting, for the sake of that one number, you approve the preliminary and.
Okay, okay, I got, I got your answer. You want us to go forward on the preliminary plan tonight? Okay, fine.
That's not what I'm saying.
Yes, you just did. You just said, because of one number, and you don't have it, I'm requesting that you approve the preliminary plan, is what you just said. So we will vote on your preliminary plan tonight, because that's what you're requesting. You're entitled to that, we'll vote on it. Okay? That's what you just asked. Because you say because of one number, I want you to, that I put on there, I want you to vote on the preliminary plan, so we'll vote on it. The board may vote yes, it might vote no, we'll find out shortly. Very simple. Okay?
Okay, well, I mean, and if you don't vote, you want me to resubmit the plan?
I don't want you to do anything, you decide what you do. I'm just giving you alternatives.
No, I'm just asking you.
I'm, I'm not telling you what to do, no.
Okay, what are, what are the options available?
We vote on the plan, number one. Number two, you withdraw the plan. Basically, yes?
And the application remains open?
If you withdraw the plan, you could ask that you be put on the agenda at a future date, and, for another preliminary subdivision plan? Yes.
Okay. Let's go with this second.
Option two? Okay. So you, so by withdrawing it, we're not gonna vote on it, we're gonna give you a chance.
Mr. Chairman, you won.
Okay. By withdrawing it, we're giving you a chance to fix the defect, okay? That's all.
Defect?
That, that is the defect in the plan, okay? This tells us we can't vote on it unless this on the plan. And it says it in three different spots. Actually, it says you can't even submit your plan to us until all these things are done. So, okay. So at this point in time, I believe the applicant has requested that he withdraw the preliminary plan at this point in time, so we can come back with another preliminary plan, which would meet the requirements of the subdivision control law and hopefully put the comments on that have been requested by staff. I'll make a motion to approve the request to withdraw the plan. Okay? So we have a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So at this time, this was drawn, go back and speak with staff, go over your plan, and they'll pick you a date in the future. Unfortunately, it's not gonna be August 16th.
Yes, sir.
It won't be the 16th because we have too much on that night, okay? So just go over the plans with them, and if they tell you need certain dimensions on the roadway, give them a new set of plans to make sure those dimensions on the road, okay? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good luck. Thank you, sir. Okay. So moving along on the agenda, do we have any, uh, further business or comments from board members?
I have an historic board report, Mr. Chairman. Uh, at our last meeting, we officially voted to, uh, accept the verbiage of the, that was presented, uh, before, the, the mural policy. We voted on it and unanimously agreed that that is, that will provide the general public and people that wanna create murals, the guidelines, to do it properly. That will, that will allow us to, um, take applications, just like a regular historic board, uh, application, uh, and, and review them for approval. We expect that, um, we'll have our first submittal in Aug-, probably at our meeting on August 12th. So it's moved right along and we're in a kind of an implementation stage. The second thing I, I wanna report on is that, uh, people are working pretty hard in the background to get the historic board live, um, as we do on the, the planning board. And right now, they're looking at the mayor's reception, which apparently. And right now, they're looking at the mayor's reception, which apparently can be done, but it has to be confirmed. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart, any other board members, you have any follow-up? Any further comments from staff, we all set? Okay, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion's made in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Chair, Board Chair, we are adjourned, good night and thank you, everyone.
Okay.